Do we have, let's call the meeting to order of the Manona Committee of the Hall, Wednesday, November 12, 2025. Would you please call the roll?
Alder Brenstein.
Here.
Alder Robimacher is not here yet. Alder Homquist.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder DePulis excused. Alder Kugel.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose will be liberty and justice for all. Okay. Tonight is the Committee of the Hall for our first part of the Committee of the Hall, the operating budget, number C, Council Review of 2026 Operating Budget. And we're going to start with Mark providing it over.
Thank you. It's a lot for everybody being here tonight. I kind of want us to start on the property taxes, how it all started, kind of directions that were given to department heads. So the directions were given to the department heads, it might be a little confusing. The, for general, if you're in the general fund, your expenses was a 3% increase. If you had a separate fund, like the library, media, which has their own fund balance, their own property taxes, the levy number was a 3% increase. So if you're, say, for example, your expenditures could have been 6%, but you have offsetting revenues, in the end, the levy, the levy impact was still 3%. So that was the whole. And pretty much, most of the departments had it, utilities too, was a 3% increase to the expense side. Majority of the department heads met that, utilities were a little bit over, over the library, we'll talk about that later, they had a lot of issues this year, the deal was stated, or not stated, county tax changes, but they still got within 4%. And once you see the number, you understand that's actually really good, but there we get to 4% instead of 3. So the total overall property tax levy is $12,488,415. What's this first line?
Madison, Wisconsin, plus one, six zero, six two two, one eight nine five.
So the overall property tax levy is $12,488,415. And that's also on page, page five in the book. The overall increase is $443,563, or 3.68%. Majority of that is related to debt service. So a couple of things here, there's a lot of operating levy per state. The total amount we can increase in levy for the operating portion excluding debt service is $8,489,690. Again, on page five kind of shows that. We had, in that order, it's $115,700, and it's gone on to $700 in 2025. We came under that levy by $11,461. But by state statutes and how we can shore debt service, do not lose, some people ask, well, we're going to lose that $100,000. We do not lose that money, carry zone, we're going to use it next year if you don't increase it to the base number. So there's no issue that way. For net new construction was 1.36%. Just so you can kind of compare it to the last two years, 2025 was, apparently we had the referendum, but it was 4.45%, less than half percent. And the year before that, it was actually negative, our number was zero. So there's been a lot of construction going on recently. Talk about the debt service, that is exactly the levy limit, they did have an increase of $339,355,000. That's where your majority of that is. Tax rate decreased from 6.58 to 6.25. On an average property tax for the city share, $73 and change. That's compared to medium home assessed currently at $469,500, apparently last year $435,000. Total expenditures is $21,311, a decrease of $105,000, I'm sorry, just doing a little bit of rounding here, from last year, a decrease of 49%. Revenues did increase, 2.32% or almost $200,000. Decrease for expenditures, it's kind of the overall, the big thing is, there's a couple of things in the general fund, there was a transfer last year from the general fund to debt service, about six, it was around about $650,000. And remember last year, we put the referendum money in contingency, and that gets reduced every year, and that's a contingency number, we'll get into that, we'll show where it's at, it's being reduced. So the revenues, the expenditures were being reduced for those two major things. That's where the major decreases you'll see when it comes to, especially for the general fund with the overall. We'll do revenues tonight, just kind of, kind of hit on some stuff. Your utility, property tax bill, projected to be a $15,000 decrease. Shared revenues increased by $12,000. Expenditure restraint program, so we did not qualify for expenditure restraint last year, so we qualified for expenditure restraint prior year. This current budget does qualify for 2027. We knew we weren't qualified for it last year because of the referendum, we didn't know we were going to make that. But I did hand out a sheet tonight, it kind of looks like this, just want to show how that number is determined, because it is a little bit funky, because it takes the expenditures and it does take the property taxes of the other, other funds like the media, library, rec, EMS, solid waste and transit funds. So it takes that into consideration, it doesn't look at their expense, just the overall property tax number. Currently, we're under $437,000. State gives us a number, what we're allowed to increase, we're liable to increase by a 3.5%. We easily meet that by $832,000, so we will qualify for next year based on the current budget. We do qualify that, and like you said, last year's $144,000, I assume it's going to be somewhere around there next year too, 2027. And then just kind of going back to that 3% thing we talked about, beginning with the other funds, as you see the percent increases, you know, media's 3%, library 4%, community rec is a little misleading, it's a zero because there's a, we increased, decreased after increases park stuff and general fund in total, and it's fine. EMS 73%, solid waste. Last year, when we did the budget, because a year before we had a contract, we got revenues for recyclables, that tipped a lot, so we had a negative $20,000, $20 some thousand dollars. We had last year, extra money to make that money up, so that's, now we only need that money. We put in an extra, basically it's like contingency or just to make up our lost fund balance, because we were showing the negative $20,000 in fund balance, $20,000 in cash. So now it's back to where it's supposed to be, around target, so there's a change. So that's why it's zero. The transit money ran at 3%. So you can see everybody hit their goals, majority of them, and how the expenditure restraint program works. Again, the big difference at 495, it does include the transfer last year, and the contingency, that's where that big change in expansions are. One other thing on this revenue, I just want to hit. Ryan will be talking about tonight, library county decreased by $29,000. We ended tonight, it's been a decrease, I think, I remember when I came up, it was like, we had the last couple of years, it's close to like $7,000, $8,000. So, got lucky last year with the referendum, to kind of make up that, you know, that capital aid is still dropping, so it's going to be kind of an ongoing issue. And also tonight, you'll notice there's going to be three budgets, I don't know if you noticed that. So the rec department, we broke out, it was rec department was one digit budget, and now we broke that budget into three other ones, we took out the after school program, the summer camp program, and the, we call GCP, the Grand Crossy program. So Jake will be here tonight, because he does have three extra budgets. That's one change to this budget. Expenditure side, budget again, just like the referendum, maintain our current services, non-reps at 3%. Police and fire increases, bringing approved contracts, this will be the second year of a three-year contract. WRS rates increased from 6.9% to 7.2 for general employees, that's our share we pay into WRS. WRS decreased for public safety, which did have a little bit of an impact. Our often shares was like 7.9 or something like that, so it's at 90%. And our designated fund balance is almost 27% for general fund operating budget.
Mark?
We did, but we didn't use any general fund fund balance, if anything, we did last year. Mayor Moore?
Could you go back to the previous slide? And the second to the last bullet point, health insurance increased by 8% or it increased to 8% from 7.9?
No, I mean, it came, the actual number is like 7.9.
So you're just rounding. Okay, that's fine. I misunderstood. Okay. Thank you.
Let's see, I think it's really 8%. So, and that's what we use in our analysis, a couple of dollars difference. We did use debt service fund in, for the fund, for the debt service, by $100,000. Just so you know, really your debt service fund should have a zero fund balance, technically it's going to come in like that. We built it up based on line of interest, some premiums, we did, we do a call for bonds, if you don't remember, you can hear these premiums we're getting, well, that's supposed to be used during next year's, first interest payment's over next year, so that's going to, it's the first interest payment we just had. We did, this is only when we use, capital budget, this is a little bit different, you do have fund balance, you have to wait a year, you wish to have a zero, but that's not part of this. So this is kind of broke this down, there's the graph here. Expenditures by department, so I did put place for dispatch together, firing gas, as you can see kind of where everybody's, where your operating budget money is going. As you notice, I'm just going to point this out, because in the next slide, it's going to make a difference, you see pool of rec and community center. You notice it's one of the second highest one for expenditure wise. So if you go to the next slide, here's expenditures net of the expenditure, the revenues, you can see now there are community rec, let's just alter them again, they're one of the lowest ones. So basically, community rec is funding itself, not using property tax. As you can see, it's still police, general governance, like your insurance, IT, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't really get a revenue source added to it. I didn't break out the grants, I just, like, state share revenue is just one overall, I didn't break it to specific. More if you had general revenue going to your account. So as you can see, police, police is community highs, public works, library, and then actually firing. Just wanted to make that note, because you might look at, like you said, look at the graph before, I notice always sometimes comes an issue with people, the rec department has this huge expenditure, but the reality is, they have a ton of revenue coming in all set there.
I just want to point out, if, assuming that these slides may go onto the website, the slide before this one, you might want to change the background color.
Thank you.
You can barely read it. Don't think it's just me.
It's not.
And I needed sunglasses on top of it.
For some reason, I agree.
Just a simple, a simple white.
On your computer screen, it's actually more, you need to change the projector.
Yeah, a simple black and white would be fine.
I'm just saying, if it goes on the website, it might be helpful for people to read it.
Well, there's always going to be challenges ahead, you know, setting, net new construction is always going to be the biggest one. We do have the referendum money, we still keep that, breaking it down in contingency, we're using basically $217,000 each year. Next year, we think we'll have, we'll have that extra expenditure restraint money. The balloon will come in this year, and that could be offset by River Place being torn down, so you're not going to get your full value. And that's one of the things with net new construction, it's the net number, right? So you've got balloon coming at a hundred percent, but then you also have two projects, or you have the River Place project where it's torn down to zero. So you're not going to get the full $28 million, I think it is roughly, in their agreement, you might get 22 on that one. But you're still going to get a good number. So I think next year, I mean, I think we're going to have challenges, but I think with the referendum, especially with the referendum that was passed, and the net new construction, you know, I think we're going to be okay. You know, I think the biggest challenge is more glasses, the next slide is going to be utilities. I think that's, to me, one of our issues, like we talked about the water rate case, there's a lot of rates, the capital borrowing, there was a 20% increase effective, A1 for '25, in the budget, there's a 15% increase for stormwater. I'll show you how that's determined in the stormwater, or stormwater fund, we get that tomorrow night. Any questions? I just wanted, there's a graph that I also sent out from your desk, I did put it in there, because it's not official, and I didn't want to put it out there, and somebody said we didn't have the numbers, because I don't have a couple of numbers, it looks like this. So it breaks down, breaks down the shares between the school district, county, city, M A T C. I do not have the county number yet sent to me, and I do not have the, which is another one that relates to the school district, the school credit number, that will have the effect of that. So just kind of, just, just to take a look at it, you know, where we're at. I will on page, just want to hit this last thing, on page, simple graph. Kind of the same thing for both page 10, available, page 10 shows effectively where they're at. So I did put estimated income at 3%. You do have NG schools, you do have Madison schools, M A T C, and also Madison College, and us. Based on that information with an estimate, and again, I don't have the school credit number, I think the overall tax bill, roughly, believe, $770,000 is what it is, because if you look at the, you're looking at on page 10, you'll see the increase for the school district, because this year is about $300,000, because they are still going to have their own goal. The one good thing, just so you're aware, so Pudge Road has a massive tip that's closing, I don't know if, they're going right out the interstate, that's Quick Trip and Johnson Bank. That's, talking with their finance director, it's closing this year, so it's effective for next year. Even though if they're going to keep it open, open one more year for their affordable housing issue. But just based on working with them, what do you think the swing is? Right now, the city, I'm going to round up, you pay 53% of the school taxes, you think it's going, you think it probably do a 6% swing, so next year we'll get 40, 47%. And that's going, this number will decrease to a number I don't know. So the property tax number for NG should be a good connection. If everything falls in line with, if they close, they didn't know for sure if they're going to close or not close. So that is one thing, you know, those tiffs do affect us and them in closings. It's kind of an odd situation, it's not usually common, but it will have an effect in future years. That's all I have, if you have questions.
Great. Any questions for Mark? Doug?
One, I did, I wanted to follow up on the chart, but you did, you noted there's, we have 27, almost 27% in the fund balance, general fund balance. So our policy is to have that at 20%. Do you know what the amount is?
What the 15 to 20 is?
What the, no, what the difference between, I've got it right in front of me. On page three in the box. So there's 600, almost 40,000 above the 20%.
Yes.
And in the past, we've sometimes used at least some of that to pay down the debt service?
We haven't done that, it's multiple years, it's not coming.
Just a thought. On the chart, I'm struck by the city share is almost 35% now, the schools are about 48. That used to be, like, city share was more like 25% and schools were much higher.
The school has been, to be honest, has been dropping over the last, this was a big bump in kind of the year before, but years past, they had been dropping, their number had, had been leveled off, whereas Royal Marne, as far as our taxes.
Okay.
That's more debt service related. Yours was pretty flat for a couple of years, and that's kind of caught up, and our referendum caught up this.
Oh, right, yeah. I, so to that point, this pie chart would have looked a little different last year before the referendum.
Oh, yeah, that totally, yeah, you'd see.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Mark? Okay. Mark, thank you very much, as always, I know this has been a very put together.
I do want to, just one other thing about that. You know, we did sit down with the mayor, we did go through it. There's very little changes, just so everybody knows, what the committee approves, a lot of changes might have been just consolidation or here or somewhere, or somewhere in there, but if you look at it, there's going to be very, very little changes in that, a lot of it goes out to departments, and, you know, they got the gold from the mayor and stuck to that number, so.
Thank you. And I will, I take the credit or blame too for Jake now splitting out his budget a little bit more. That was something that we, you know, I was trying to get Jake to catch up with Dan in terms of the number of accounts that he has under community recreation, I think he came close. So, no, I, I thought it was really important that we, we separate out more than we had previously, rather than lumping everything under recreation, and I think it gives us a better picture of what's working and what's not working. Right. Great, thank you, Mark. First up would be Will Nemo with Community Media, and that would be page 104.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. If you look at the budget, there is no real significant changes. The studio maintenance, maintenance fee under television has decreased by $2,500, though we may, I think we took out twice, because I took it out, and then, and then I think it got, some money got taken out again, because we, we got rid of the Manona Go app. We looked at the numbers, and people were downloading the Manona Go app, but they weren't using the Manona Go app. So in comparing that with YouTube and looking at the numbers, it just wasn't worth the amount of money that we were paying for the amount of usage we were getting. So the committee had decided to, to let that one go. It's certainly something we can do again, we'll pay a little bit more to kind of another onboarding commissioning fee, but it's, it's not like it's, it's never going to happen again. If we decide we wanted to do that, we could certainly do it again, and maybe we do something that's tied to the website a little more, so there's a little more functionality to the app as well.
So, Will, just to be clear, you're saying, we, because I want Mark to hear this too, you're saying, you already know this?
Yeah, we just talked about it five minutes ago.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, I, I swear in the meetings, we talked about it, that's why, otherwise we wouldn't have touched on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then, under, under the radio part-time wages, I submitted a request to increase the studio directors, excuse me, studio, yeah, studio directors' salary, increase that by $2. So that's above the 3%, but that position continually gets underfunded and under-resourced because it's just a newer position over the last few years.
Any questions for Will?
I have one.
Yeah.
How are you for staffing right now?
Right now, in pretty good shape. I mean, this department's kind of one of those things, and I assume it's with a lot of departments, where one person goes on vacation, one person's sick, and then you're, you're kind of, your week ends up being different because you're filling in for that person. And that's, that's true for, you know, the, basically the two employees, two and a half employees we have, if anybody's out, then, you know, mostly it would be me who fills in, because not all, not everybody's cross-trained in everything we do. So I think right now it's okay. I mean, the first thing I would do is, is get the station director position at the radio station to be a full-time position. That would be probably my priority.
How many hours is that now?
35 hours. So it's very close, but, you know, there's no benefits, and so that makes it tough, and just the commitment level of somebody coming in, if this person were to leave, I think we would have to think hard about what we propose to the next candidate that would come through the doors.
You said there's no benefits with that position?
Well, it's, they're on the retirement, Wisconsin retirement system, yes.
Oh, okay.
They have to be.
No health insurance.
Right, right, no health insurance. And, and, you know, no vacation or, or things like that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Will.
Yep.
Next up is Doug Plowman with planning, and that would be page number 98.
I'm going to start with the planning department's budget. I think the biggest change that you'll notice here is some reallocation as it relates to the staffing, so it's been discussed more recently, bringing on board the full-time city planner.
Just started Monday, by the way.
Started this week. And so having that on board, having him on board, and then sort of the planning intern line item that was, of course, funded in '25 and not needed in '26. So most of the other items have remained the same, of course, the benefits have changed, the health insurance line item has adjusted because of the full-time staff member, but everything else has remained steady. Certainly committing to remain at the existing professional development number, even with two staff members, and certainly happy to answer any other questions as, as it relates to that. I think just a couple highlights from kind of the work plan and the ideas that we have in mind. Of course, we're about to kick off the conference of plan process, so that'll be a goal for the next year, moving through that. And generally, you'll hear this through the next few budgets as well, but streamlining processes and really gaining efficiencies. Happy to answer any questions.
So on page 98, that accounts for both positions in the planning department? It can't.
Those positions, part of them are also allocated over TIF districts and other, there are multiple funds that are used to fund the staff in the planning department, not just the general fund. So that's why that number's a little lower than you would expect.
Yeah. It's up with your voice.
Yeah, if you, if you remember during the, when we approved his, the budget amendment we did just recently for this.
Right.
I don't remember the exact number, but it's split, planning is a majority of his time, but not all of it. TIF is a lot where he goes into Renew Manona, and then CDA. So it's split between four different funds.
Okay.
All based on, we worked with Doug before, before we had a new position, really changed the allocation, because a lot of, he's, a lot of this stuff is actually CDA TIF, but he's still a lot on the planning side too, so. So it's all split between four. I think I can get you the full number between the two of them.
Yeah, sometimes it's just not accurate to look at, you know, the page that says planning, it's not really, it doesn't really encapsulate everything in the planning department, but I understand that that's not always easy to do.
Because there's three different, three other funds, and that's, yeah, so we could probably put in the description where the percentage goes, I don't know if we have that issue.
I think that could be updated.
Yeah, we're.
And that, that's true with virtually every department.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah.
The, the justification just simply refers to a share of salaries plus fifteen percent.
But it would be nice to have a sheet, a spreadsheet that showed, you know, what the total ca- cost of the position was. It could show the breakdown, but you'd have the, you know.
We can, I mean, we have it all.
Yeah.
In spreadsheets now, we can get, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, it is hard to, you know.
Yeah.
When they're s- split up, now Jake's are going to be really split up.
Right.
Right, I was going to say, I mean, I don't know that it, we should necessarily change it on here, but have a separate sheet that would show the workouts, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Absolutely.
There's no way to really do it.
Yeah, because sometimes, like, you'll page through the budget, like I said, well, how many, how many police officers do we have? How many, I mean, I, it's, the budget really doesn't, it's kind of difficult to have those staffing numbers.
Those are, I mean, the police officers and fire, I mean.
Yeah.
It's fifty-fifty, police and EMS, but police is, I mean, EMS and fires fifty-fifty, but police is all in one. It's really like the public works employees.
Planning, yeah.
Everybody's.
Parks, yeah.
Parks.
Yeah. Just something for the future.
Yeah.
When you're updating the color of that slide, you know, you do that.
Okay. You want to take the next one, which is, sorry, uh?
Inspections, I believe.
Inspections?
My page number on that is seventy-one.
Seventy-one?
Uh, so, inspections, uh, that covers both the building inspection, uh, position, building inspector, which is a contracted position, uh, the city works through General Engineering Company, GEC, uh, for that. And, uh, one of the changes that you'll notice, um, from, from last year is the community service officer, officer slash code enforcement officer, uh, that combined position, uh, moving forward here as well. So, uh, we have a, an employee that splits time there, um, so, five hours a week are committed here to, to code enforcement efforts, and then there's also time, um, for parking and, um, other police, some police department matters as well. So, same, same individual with the, the hours, um, as it's broken up between those. Uh, so, as far as kind of comments and, and things as it relates to inspections, definitely the efficiencies and processes, uh, are a big part of this, uh, as it relates to building inspection, uh, and feeds in with, with planning, um, just making sure that we streamline that as, as much as possible. Uh, and then, I do also plan, uh, on Monday to, to return to city council with an update on code enforcement efforts and some metrics and some things in terms of how, I think it's been about six months now, uh, since this new position has kind of been set up this way, uh, so just to share some feedback and, um, kind of how it's, how it's going as well, some successes with that. So, uh, happy to discuss any, anything else, uh, as it relates to inspections.
Any questions?
I actually did.
Yeah.
So, similar to my last question about the, the top line under salaries, so the story here is not that we had a de- decrease of ten thousand dollars. We're not paying someone ten thousand dollars less. It's just that, that those funds are coming from a different source.
So, the changes in the position, uh, is sort of the evolution of that and the breaking up of those numbers. Um, I would say on an hourly basis, we are a lot lower than when we were, um, in terms of commitment to code enforcement. Uh, I'd say the efficiencies and the progress that we're seeing is, is still very good, um, and we're very happy with the way we are. So, I, I think, again, Mark completely answered it all better in terms of how it's figured out, but, uh, from a financial commitment towards code enforcement versus the twenty-five level, I think that is correct.
I would add, although that, I know Leah is taking a look at, at kind of classify, just making sure we've classified the position correctly.
Okay.
And there may be some recommended movement, maybe in the next budget next year, depending on how we do. Yeah, it's split between the CSO officer and.
And then, uh, of course, the inspection services for building inspection is, is very much dependent upon work coming in, the budgets that we, we generate and the time, there's obviously that, uh, relationship that between how much time is needed. I'd imagine here with the significant volume family, commercial projects growing up, those hours are going to increase with the budget revenue as well.
Got a question.
Yes, Doug.
Have we looked at increasing our fees for inspections, or have we done that recently? I know it's been talked about, but.
We did, uh, increase those, um, I believe, sort of the January, uh, just, just on, uh, of twenty-twenty-five, but it's something we're always evaluating, um, and I, I think certainly the commercial numbers, um, absolutely could, could continue to evolve just with the work and the, the time that is needed for those. Uh, we're lucky with General Engineering Company, they have kind of standardized, uh, rates that they, they charge other communities. Um, we choose to have our own schedule, but they have kind of a template that they use. So, that's a good way for us to kind of check, uh, against that, and I think there's, there's certain areas that we could probably look at. Um, I, I don't think it was a sweeping change last year, so there's probably some areas, uh, and that, that's on, on the work plan, uh, to come forward in December, I think, for, to go into effect.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? On this particular, no?
No.
No? Okay. Next up is CDA, that would be page number one oh-one.
Thank you. So, with this one, uh, it's really the, uh, administration of the tax incremental districts, um, as well as some of the, the staff time that was already discussed. Uh, so I think from the priorities of, of this group, it's really the, the projects that are underway, uh, namely, you know, Top Golf, River Place, Manona Finds Bloom, Manona Garden, uh, which is a basic project, as well as the White Horse site. Uh, so, just the, the work that's been put in for, for the creation of these districts, uh, being able to use those, incentivize future growth, and just really the importance of those districts, um, for the city. Uh, and, and again, I think the, the changes here were really, as it relates to the reinsurance of the funds.
Yeah, and just, so you know, too, like, he just mentioned all those projects, like, every one of them's a TIF project, basically. So, it's kind of one of those things, majority of that, those, all those costs would be charged to those TIFs. So, we do have the CDA, it's really, the stuff that gets charged to the CDA is non-TIF work. So, if he's working on something that's not within a TIF, then, then the expense would come out of there. If it's, even though it goes to the CDA for a review and all that stuff, and it's still a TIF project, we charge it to the TIF, so, just so you're aware of this. That's why the costs might seem like a lot for the non-salary ones, it's because all, that all gets charged to the individual TIF.
Questions on CDA? Okay, so none. Uh, next up is Renew Manona, and that's one sixty-three.
Thank you. Uh, so this program is, uh, the extension of the, uh, the tax incremental district that's closing. Uh, we're allowed to do that to incentivize affordable housing. The city, uh, targeted the Renew Manona Fund as, as a way to offer low-interest, two percent loans, uh, for those making improvements or purchasing a home in the city, as it is the eligibility requirements. That being said, we are looking, uh, with the help of all the words, um, the CDA, we're looking into, to some potential changes, an evolution of that program. Um, I have some, uh, questions out right now, both to our assessor, as well as, uh, a couple of financial institutions, just in terms of what we can do and some opportunities there. Uh, but just looking at potentially, uh, clarifying some of those eligibility criteria and, and just based upon what we've seen and what we would like to see moving forward. Uh, but generally, the, the plan is to keep the, um, amounts the same, uh, so from a budget perspective, uh, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand per year, uh, the, the distribution of that may change based upon the program evolution as well.
I could do one thing to add too, I'm sorry. Um, so right now, TIF four, which is Manona Drive TIF, um, that is, I mean, based on what we have left outstanding on their debt service, we could, um, close it in two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, so something the CDA is going to have to look at next year is, do we want to keep it open that one extra year, um, for the affordable housing? So, that's, would go into the, uh, go into Renew Manona, and it's roughly about a million dollars in increment that would go into it, so just in that way.
Just related to that, Mark, do you have a sense of, of what our balance currently is from the last time we had, did a holdover? Like?
What's currently right now, we have available in cash is over eight hundred, little over eight hundred thousand. So, we have eight hundred thousand still to, with what's coming in and what we're paying out, we have about eight hundred thousand.
Okay. So, this would be an, an additional million over and above the eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, if that's a route they want to go, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to do it, but if you do it, that's where that would.
Mark, does that get approved by CDA or the city council, or is it supposed to extend additionally?
Uh, it doesn't have to go to the joint review board. I think this, it's just a, if I remember, oh, you weren't here. I remember, it's just a, uh, resolution to the city council. Yeah, I believe so. And then we send it to the state. So, it doesn't need to be approved by the GRB at all.
Doesn't have to be approved by?
The joint review board.
Okay. All right, so it is a resolution that.
Just a resolution approved by the council, and we send it to the state.
Got it.
Other questions related to this, Renew Manona?
I have one.
Yeah, Ryan.
Mark, can you explain that in twenty-twenty-five, the hundred and ninety, the fund balance apply? Is that, are you talking about the eight hundred thousand? And then, for this upcoming year, it would be one fifty-two?
That's just, uh, the difference, the fund balance apply number is the difference between, oh, that, what the expenses are and what's, uh, so we have the revenue coming in, this year it's a hundred and twenty thousand. So, the hundred and twenty thousand minus the two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, the total expenditures minus a hundred and twenty is what our gap is. That'd be coming out of that fund balance. So, we're really only reducing our fund balance by a hundred and fifty-two thousand, because we have the hundred and twenty thousand of revenue coming in.
And so, are, are you saying, going back to like twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah.
We were only giving out loans at the amount that we were taking in? We weren't exceeding that?
Uh, we just weren't, didn't have the applications.
Okay, so this is just the prediction of getting up to the two fifty, which we've been realizing.
I put the max on there of the two fifty, and so, in case it goes under, I mean, if it's, if it goes under, it's just that we're not getting enough applications.
Okay.
And then, the two fifty is the max when we go to unless it's approved as a different.
And I know we have a, a possible revision to the.
Yes, yeah.
The program overall, so.
This year, for reference, I think, the current state on, on this is, I think, we were wanting over two hundred thousand, so, um, it's, it's moving in the right direction this year. Uh, I have some flows each year, but, uh, twenty-five has been a good year with long interest.
Okay, perfect.
Other questions? More questions? Okay. Right, thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Next up would be Ryan in the library. And that would be on page one eleven. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, good evening. All right, um, so, with the library for twenty-twenty-six, um, looking at what we can do with our budgets, um, and I kind of tried to lay it out, lay out in the narrative, kind of what we're looking at of trying to accomplish. Um, I have here like balancing success with the needs. Um, we've had, uh, you know, my staff have done a great job with programming and with circulation, and then looking to see how we can continue that progress, while also looking at the limitations specifically with space, and also with trying to get out more in the community outside of the building, primarily due to the space concerns, as well as reaching those, um, community members that are maybe unable to get out to the library or are unaware of the library. Um, and circulation being the biggest priority as, as it pertains to the county funding. So, the county funding reimbursement, uh, formula looks at the square footage of the library, and then also, that's one component of the formula. The major component is the circulation, and so those communities that pay the library tax, Manona is not one of them, because we have a public library, uh, those communities that pay the, the county tax, that's pulled together, and then it's dispersed to all the libraries based on this formula. Major factor is circulation of physical materials, um, I want to stress that, not any overdrive, Libee, um, eBooks and e-audiobooks, those do not pertain to the formula, it's physical materials. Um, you, I'm sure, noticed that our county funding has gone down for that reimbursement, primarily due to the circulation, and it's a three-year rolling average. Um, this, this, I believe we're in year two now, where we're looking at post-COVID numbers. Uh, admittedly, this library was, uh, not as fast as the neighboring libraries in terms of opening up the entire building, and you're seeing that with the circulation numbers. With making circulation a priority, however, this past year, we've increased our circulation of physical materials by six-point-four percent compared to last year. And that's, as it remains a priority, and with, uh, the library staff doing a fantastic job of prioritizing circulation by not only the displays, if you've seen, we have more displays out in the physical space here in the library, but also taking like our, uh, our library bike out into the community filled with items, trying to be more of a presence out in the community with items, and using that hotspot with not only having programs out in the community, but having those items, being able to be circulating out there. That six-point-four percent may not sound a lot, like a lot, but the neighboring libraries are actually below, um, the six-point-four percent. In fact, many of them are negative compared to last year. So, in my opinion, we are actually kind of bucking a trend of lower physical circulation. Uh, the only, I would say, not super sunshiny part of this is it's a three-year rolling average, so we may not see that dramatic, um, increase in getting those county funding reimbursements next year. It will take a couple of years because of that three-year rolling average. But with that focus on trying to get the circulation up, um, as well as leaning on staff and their abilities to really, um, to push out those library materials to the community, as well as put out outstanding programs to the community, um, we feel confident that, that will continue. And so, looking at the way to do that, I try to adjust my budget as much as possible because, while we have the three percent increase, the decrease in the county funding basically, um, took away, took that away. Uh, and so, I am reducing the maintenance line items, which I appreciate that the council increased that because of the maintenance issues that this older building has had. But with the passing of the HVAC capital project as the final phase, we anticipate those maintenance costs to go down drastically, fingers crossed. Um, and also adjusting the collection budget, which may seem counterintuitive, however, we do have the book for life funding from the foundation that can help, um, supplement the city funding for those collections, and I'll be leaning on those, as well as with that funding, purchasing not only books, but we've seen much success with kits, specifically in the youth services department, where, uh, like, for example, our most, uh, popular item on hold are the American Girl Dolls. Um, those continue to be a very, uh, quote-unquote, hot item for circulation. We also will be having what's called Tony Boxes kits that will be very popular, as well as, oh my goodness, this is how old I am, I can't keep up with the trends of the, the different, like, players. Um, a, a similar item, the name escapes me right now, that's a, a card-based system for audiobooks that, um, we will be circulating the cards out to players in age, and it, as well as the player, unless a patron has the player, then they can just get those, the cards. So, looking at that, I'm also looking at reducing the landscaping budget. This is, again, meant to try to focus on other needs of the library, and I will lean on my, uh, wonderful group of volunteers and more coordination on my end, to make sure that the landscaping for the library continues to look as, as good as it does now, and we will continue to make sure that the outside area is, 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 is well-presented. Um, I've had conversations, Mayor, you know, regarding the, for example, our lovely arachnid neighbors in the lower level, and seeing how we can take care of that, so it doesn't look like Halloween, um, year-round. And, um, it, lastly, I would say I had to reduce the programming as well, but again, I will, um, lean on our wonderful friends of the library, which has done a great job raising funds, um, from the community for the library that goes towards those programs and services, as well as their annual event, Loud in the Library, uh, which, Mark, your calendar is on January thirty-first, um, this year, last Saturday, theme of nineties, so, um, break out your parachute pants. Is there any questions based on any of the changes I've had to make to accommodate the community's needs as it comes to the library services?
Actually, Ryan, I have a request.
Yes.
Which is, um, I think you, just in terms of the amount of county aid, I think it's important, as Ryan just pointed out, um, the formula is pretty wacky, and if you would be so kind as to share with this group what you shared, uh, around the fact that there's been, first of all, committees formed.
Oh, sure.
To try to, uh, address the, the imbalances, and then if, should you desire, share in contrast, for instance, what Verona does.
So, um, yes, excuse me. I've been on suit, to, the, the Dane County library, library directors meet quarterly, um, and I've been on two subcommittees as part of this group to look at the, uh, library formula, on how it can be modernized based on library services. You know, in its conception, it was really focusing on circulation, as libraries have evolved over the years to meet different community needs, trying to see like, well, how, what other data can we incorporate to show the usage of the library to accurately reflect, um, and the need for reimbursement? The unfortunate part is, both of these, um, two- The unfortunate part is, both of these two subcommittee research done, the first one was by just internally the directors. The second, we actually hired a facilitator, I'm sorry, not a facilitator, a consultant to look at other libraries, not only in the state but around the country, if they have any similar types of formulas. What was determined is that there currently is no better way to get this. Partly because a lot of the services that the library does, we are recording it internally. And to be frank, the possibility of any kind of wrong data to be put in to get more funding is just, it's there. The one exception was if there was a way to centralize a door count, which would kind of indicate usage of the library's space. And theoretically, if like the South Central Regional Library System would administer and watch this, that would, that would work. But I don't see that happening anytime soon, because that's not really SCLS's job. And in fact, what they did propose was that in terms of, from an equity perspective of dispersment of funds, maybe there should be a floor set in, meaning that, for example, the city of Madison actually pays money based on the formula to, because the formula says actually you owe money instead of getting money. And so they would set a floor like $0, which would then reduce the amount of money to the other libraries. That hasn't happened yet, but it is currently being discussed. The mayor mentioned, you know, some of our neighboring libraries, which as an aside, are all wonderful libraries, but the dispersment is, how do I put it, lopsided? So there are, for example, I believe, the Verona Public Library, which is again is a fantastic library, per the formula, last I checked, they receive more than a million dollars from the county. And that's, again, based on the formula of what they've done. Other libraries, like the city of Fitchburg, I believe, is getting like under 50,000, and it's continued to go down, again, based on the formula. So what the, what's concerning on my end, from where I, where I'm looking at it, is that once you, once you reach a point with the formula, it will essentially be, it'll perpetuate more and more funding because you can just use those funds to like increase your, your collection size, which I believe is an indicator of getting more usage, as well as allowing you to take those funds and apply it to like your collections, and then you could use what should be those funds for more staff, which is the best resource the library can have. I personally believe that tipping point for some libraries is they'll just continue to get more. And there's more of a scramble to see how we can best get a reimbursement based on the services that we've provided to the neighboring communities. It's an ongoing process because the library directors are a little concerned that this reimbursement, as it goes down for the other municipalities, and the others are getting more, what can we do? I'm in the process of maybe, I wouldn't say leading the discussion, but at least throwing it out there that the directors consider a ceiling, for example. So they discussed a floor, like it'd be zero, but maybe a ceiling based on your, your operating funds that only a certain percentage would go or be allocated based on the formula to that, nothing more. The other thing I will add is that the Dane County Library Director has put forth to the Dane County, not to the board yet, but put forth an option of including programming funds, so it would be an increase in that county tax. I can't remember the percentage of it. That would then be allocate funding to all the libraries that was meant to go towards programming since it's being seen as a vital service. That would mean more dollars to the municipal libraries because there'd be an increase in the tax, but that is, that's ongoing, that has not been approved yet. I'm hoping that in the next year or two, that would be accepted. Because I don't believe that part of the Dane County tax has been increased in quite some time. So they're trying to see how they can better reflect any kind of other increases in the area.
Can I, can I assume too that there, that part of the discussions would include not just physical books, but also eBooks, e-magazines? Because like you, you've talked about the fact that you can, it's really hard to even get hard copies of magazines, as an example, now. And other things like that, or is that, is that just those are
That's always, that's always a sticky point for two reasons. One is, as far as I'm aware, and I became aware of this when I was at DPI, the federal definition of circulation actually has the word "physical" in it. So circulation is of physical items from a federal perspective.
The entire world has gone somewhere else but physical, and it's still
Could they do it on a, on a more, like on a county level? Potentially, I think where it would get a little complicated is because the state of Wisconsin has a state eBook, e-audiobook library. Everyone shipped in when they started it. It'll never happen again because it drove overdrive nuts because they lost so much money. But we have a large collection. And then all libraries can put in additional dollars in what's called the advantage collection. So I think it would have to determine, is it going to be specific to the advantage collection? Or is it going to include that larger collection? I think it's been, it's been proposed, but it's, it hasn't gone past that part, I think, for those reasons. But it's, it's possible, because it is, those usages continue to increase, especially e-audiobooks.
So, just so I understand, so the circulation only means a heart, a physical book that you hold in your hand?
The federal, the federal definition has physical as, as part of its definition for circulation. When, when, when we talk, you know, at parties about circulation, we mean basically both. But when it pertains, when I speak to it, when it comes to the Dane County funding, I am speaking specifically to physical items such as books, DVDs, Blu-rays, physical CDs, vinyl records, the kits, that kind of thing.
So when I look at, you know, page 111, under revenues, county aid for libraries, it went down from last year. Verona's went up, or maybe not up, but you said they have a million, they got a million dollars?
Last I checked.
And their population, Google, Google tells me it's not quite twice as much as, but they're getting a million is, I'm not good at math, a million is more than twice as much as, you know, you know, 150,000. But, but it, but that number in the budget, the only way, under the current formula, if I'm understanding you correctly, the only way that Manona could get that increase in county aid would be if more people asked for physical books.
More, more people checked out items at our library.
At your library, and that, but it does or does not include audiobooks and e-reader books?
It, it includes the physical audiobooks, it does not include e-audiobooks.
Oh, like the kind the kids have, like those little
Well, like, so for example, we have the audiobooks that are like CDs, right? Like you put it, if your car has a CD player, you put in disc one, you start, or there's the e-audiobook, which is through the Libby app.
Right.
Say on your phone, that you check out an audiobook, and essentially it's like a podcast. You could listen to it on your phone like that.
And that doesn't
That does not count, the, the physical audiobook does count.
It has to be a physical
That's whacked, that is so weird.
And it doesn't have to be just a physical book, it can be some, like he said, it can be music CDs.
Sure.
Yeah, any physical item.
Kits, it can be anything that gets
I'll quick add to Verona Public Library, you know, you, I, I should, I can come do a short presentation for you all, it'll be wonderful, on looking at per capita
Yeah.
circulation data. Verona is number one in the state. I mean, they're
In the county.
The, in the, in the county, in the, for the demographic, in the state. I mean, their, their, their circulation is exceedingly high beyond what you would anticipate for a populate, their municipal population. And I would say even the service population, whatever factors contribute to that, I frankly don't know.
Do they have an agreement with the schools for like books for the kid textbook? I don't know, it doesn't matter right now, but yeah, it's just interesting.
Yeah, I don't, and not, I want to be clear. They are getting that from what I would deem a successful operation
Sure.
of, within their community.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my point in asking Ryan to discuss it was only so that you have a better understanding, and a better understanding frankly of how hard he's worked, including serving on these committees to try to figure out a better way to measure. It wasn't at all to
Yeah.
to negate what Verona is doing.
Of course, yeah.
But, but I do Pretty big gap, did you have something?
Yeah. Well, I mean, again, I don't want to beat up on Verona, my son actually lives there, but do you know what the total size of the county aid pie is? Like, how much money altogether?
Not off the top of my head. I, I've seen the number before, like two years ago, I, I don't recall.
Okay. Because I know at one time, there was a real concern that that pie was going to shrink potentially as fewer residents didn't have their own library, you know, weren't, fewer communities were
Well, more communities would have their own library.
Yeah.
Like, for example, it would have shrunk if Cottage Grove would have their public library because they paid that tax.
What's the last new library that's been added?
In our area?
Yeah.
Fitchburg.
Okay.
Which was 2010.
Oh, when did Cottage Grove, when did Penny?
Well, they, they existed, they had a new building, but I
Oh, got it.
I assumed Alder Wood was asking, when has, when has a community added a library
Yeah, yeah.
that didn't exist?
It does seem, though, like a formula that makes Madison pay into it and Verona get a million out of whatever that pie is, it can't be, I mean, they must be getting a really large percentage of it, I would think.
I, I would assume so, but again, it's, 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 one thing I have to keep reminding myself, I also remind Mark from time to time, it is, it's a reimbursement, right? Like, so it's based on services already rendered to come back to that library that's provided that service.
Right.
And just based on that formula that has, you know, no emotion, like it's just saying, this library should get this amount, and this library should get that amount. We, we, I would, I, I think I can say that all the directors believe that the, the formula is not, is not as correct as it could be. That doesn't necessarily mean based on the amounts to the different libraries, but more so it just is not an accurate representation of reimbursement for the services that we provide. But it's just the best they can do from an, making it from an automated perspective.
Right.
That's the best way to do it.
Ryan, what kind of financial assistance would help you get bigger checkout numbers?
Like 2 million more dollars, or are we talking like?
No, what kind of? I mean, is it to buy books, is it to?
Well, I, I think you all have heard me say quite frequently, I, I believe it, like, staff is by far the best resource, because the staff provides the programs which brings people into the building. The staff services the people that come into the building. The staff effectively go into sales mode when they're trying to figure out how to make people aware of what items we have, as well as just not even talking about the creativity of like the displays that go out there, and all the other services that kind of get tied to the collections in terms of like what do people want to learn about or read more about, or hear more about. But also, I, I, I don't have a purely like scientific idea that this works, but I look at the libraries that have higher circulation, they have larger collections. Now, the caveat to that is most of those have higher population, which would make sense that there's more circulation. The exception is Verona. The Verona does not have an overly high municipal population. Their service population's relatively higher because I believe to the west and south of them, there's really not much in terms of other libraries. But they have a large collection, and it, it goes. Now, you could dive deeper in terms of like, why is that? Do they have a wider range of titles, most likely? But probably what it is, is they are able to have additional copies of the quote-unquote hot items, and those will go. So with all that, to answer your question, I guess, you know, staff, staff is one, but also funding for the collections, which made me have to kind of look at the budget and be like, what am I able to work with? And granted, reducing the collection budget a little bit didn't, you know, wasn't, wasn't a happy thing to do, but I have identified other sources of income to keep pushing into the collection budget to continue to increase it in terms of selection. And then down the road, I will probably try to explain to you all how best I can actually increase the physical footprint of our collections. We do have a relatively small collection size, especially given the square footage of this building, but the design is eclectic? Like, there's, there's a lot of space I have to figure out how to repurpose to actually allow for more shelving. But for example, you know, our head of youth services pushed hard for front-facing picture books. And that was very successful. We've seen, I think our picture books went up by like 45% in circulation the last like six months, just from that. So the collection, the collection size is something I'm looking at, not only in having, having, having to be able to refresh the titles more, we're also looking at duplicating those, those hotter titles, but also how I can increase the actual footprint of the, the collection itself. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Doug?
So you fell short on the county aid line. And I think Mark referenced earlier that this was one where you gave a little bit more than 3% for the
Yeah, and we ended up with about 4%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, I appreciate that, I think that's great.
Great, thank you, Ryan, I appreciate you spending the extra time, I think it's helpful for people now.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to and elections, clerk and elections.
Page 36.
Yes, page 36.
So most of this has not changed from last year, except the salaries and, and the line items that go with that. That's the rearranging of the front office staff and splitting the court clerk deputy position to Brianna's position. So you'll see a decrease in the court budget, I believe.
Yeah, so this is why, you probably got an email from the judge recently, I'll be received that. So this is where, used to be a full-time person in the court budget. That was, they wanted, they hired a new person part-time, 20, 20 hours. So we did a lot of, we came to the city council for a budget amendment, and that's why, that's why it's so much higher than it was last year, it's because of the reallocation of Brianna's time and then the court. So if you look on page, you'll see in the other page, there's a huge decrease in page page 24, those are down 47%. So you can see that's where, that's why there's ones way high. It's from that budget, it was from that adjustment we had during the year, if you remember.
Any questions for Eileen?
I have one, so if, if the, if the court clerk duties take up more time, then that's going to take away time from the availability for them to be, to their deputy duties, correct?
The court person is not a deputy anymore.
Not anymore, they're, it's separate positions now.
Oh, that's right, she's just asking for more.
She's asking for more court time for that position.
Right, sorry, save that for tomorrow.
Other questions?
Eileen?
I want to make sure I understand what I just heard. One person used to do two, two portions of a job. That person now is only doing one portion of the job?
Is it part-time person, 20 hours, 20 hours a week, I believe? So original was Elliot, and he did 20 hours. He was there 40 hours a week, so he, court came up, he did court stuff, deputy clerk stuff came up, he would do deputy. So we didn't really, we don't really have a, at the time, I think he estimated about 20 hours each.
Okay.
And so that was the reason, and then the judge hired the person part-time at 20 hours. So then we had that, I don't remember when we came back for that. So, then we had that, I don't remember when we came back for that, the budget amendment, we had that issue where uh, we needed, we needed another person to work on the front desk, and that was the front, and that's why we added that full-time position for that reason.
So, in other words, we kept a full-time position in administration.
Right.
And, and the judge went out and hired a half-time person on her own. So, it effectively went from one position
To one and a half.
That was fifty-fifty
Correct.
To one and a half.
We did make the full-time position in the clerk's office more of a receptionist position, so not a deputy clerk. So, we reduced duties on that.
Before, Elliot, in, in years before that, before it was switched, we're still, was three, three FTEs, so now it went down to two FTEs, now it's back to two point five FTEs.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I have thirty-nine, page thirty-nine, elections as well.
Yes.
So, we keep the election salaries the same each year, even though it fluctuates between two and four elections. It's just easier for budgeting. So, sometimes I'm over. It looks like in the past I haven't. I've been really close. Um, and then sometimes I'm under. The service contracts, that is based on the tabulators, so where you feed your ballots into the machines. Um, and the express votes, which are the accessible machines. So, those contracts have gone up just based on maintenance and, and support. Um, public notices, those are costing more to print. We do try to keep it as low as we can, so I've been working on word length, just to try to keep that down. And then supplies, um, we're, we're having to order enough stuff to keep the election running, and the price on that has gone up, so we increased that a little bit.
One quick thing with the elections. So, we don't adjust elections every year, so next year is gonna be, should be four, four elections. This year there's only two. So, to keep that from, kind of a yo-yo from up and down, we just keep it kind of flat, so this year we're gonna have, you know, about a five thousand dollar savings. Next year will probably be, in the end, reality, we'll probably be about five thousand dollars over. But the net over two years is usually pretty close to zero. You can just look at two thousand twenty-four, you know, that was the president election, that was at, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars, but that was kind of unique. I guess the governor one coming up is probably be a little bit more. So, in the end, it will be over budget, just so everybody's aware of that. We do, we do, uh, this year it'll be, it'll be under budget, so in the end, it zeros out over two years. Just wanna emphasize something Aline just said, in terms of watching Penny's, her residence up there. She's literally counting the words in our public notices. Trying to save money.
I heard that too. Keep it to one page, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, any other? Thank you, Aline. So, uh, the last up, or no, I shouldn't say the last up, the next one up is Jake. Does anybody need a break before we go into Jake's stuff?
You'd best take a little break now.
We got a lot.
It's gonna be a long hour.
We, we are, we are set of schedule, so I
I know we are, but I just wanted to, you know.
Let's go.
Everybody needed it. I decided to offer it. So, Jake starts, uh, parks at one-one-nine.
What's our, can you say first that we parked in the first?
Oh, okay. Okay, so page
One-twenty.
One-twenty. Comes off by a page.
Alder Wood ready?
Yeah.
I probably had to get food for this.
I get a cookie at least. All right, good evening, Mayor and Alders.
Drumroll, do we need a drumroll?
Yeah. Jake Anderson, Park and Rec Director. I think this is my seventeenth operating budget with the city. Um, pleased that this year we have, uh, seven budgets, so it's a little different than the past couple of years, and we talked about, we'll talk about that. But first, I just want to talk about our department. We have ten full-time staff in our department, and so have the eighty-ten. And what we do is pretty darn cool for the city of eighty-six hundred people. And those nine that work under my direction are amazing people. And without them, we would not be able to do half of what we do. And so, we want to acknowledge the people that takes what we do, which is significant. And as we've seen over the past five to six years, you know, revenue we've brought in for programs and services has increased. But it's not without the people that we have. And so, um, five of those are directly or indirectly in our childcare program, out-of-school time. So, that's with our after-school program and our summer camp. Three of those are directly in that program year-round with kids. And if you've ever spent a full day with children, you know it can be quite challenging. Um, but we have great kids in Minona, and, uh, one of the things that we do overall as a department is we take our community kids from when they're born into our programs, into our events. Um, we get them into our out-of-school time programming, and we've been established long enough now where some of those same kids are now working for us. And so, we are job creators in our department. We employ over a hundred fifty people every year in the different departments. We have many and most of them are Minona residents. Um, we provide services for people of all ages, and I'm very proud of what we've been able to do collectively from the mayor and the board and passports to provide the services that we have. Some of you may remember of when two thousand eight, two thousand ten, we had a committee called the Family Attraction and Retention Committee. And that was formed for the basis, for the sole reason, we didn't have enough families moving into Minona. We no longer have that problem, and that is a really good kudos to what we have here. Um, so with our operating budget, it's, and Mark has left, but it goes back and forth to, a lot of our programs offset with revenues, and that's where the levy comes in. So, uh, the community center budget is just kind of a catch-all for some of our admin salaries. It also is the building that our, our main admin offices are in, and we share the building with the Minona Senior Center. And so, we, this budget takes on all the building expenses, um, for the building that serves both Park and Rec and senior offices. The programs that we offer have, um, decreased significantly just from the childcare, because that's over at Maywood. Um, but as we go through, we've talked about the future of the community center and whether or not, what role that building should play, and whether we open it back up to public use, and there's some staff challenges, and um, and so that's something our Parks Board is gonna discuss in two thousand twenty-six, should we have a policy for um, allowing, you know, resident use of the facility. We're really, um, encouraging public events to contact us to use the building. So, this weekend, next weekend, is our thirty-fourth Annual Holiday House Bazaar, which is a craft show and sale that's open to the public. We have our Little Badger toy drive the following weekend. Um, we're working with Winaka School Friends' Family School Organization um, on a trivia fundraiser in February, and so those are really the type of events that I think we're looking at hosting at the community center. Um, but we do not have full-time staff. Uh, we have a contracted janitorial services at the building. And of course, you know, right now, we're facing some building maintenance challenges, so we're have controllers that aren't regulating the temperature and thermostat, and so that's gonna be another probably at the next meeting, a budget amendment request for the repairs that's gonna have to happen to keep the heat on in the building. Uh, but if you've been over to the community center recently since the remodel, it does look much more pleasant in both levels, including the main hall and the stairwell and down to the senior center. So, uh, for the most part, it's servicing the programs and the offices that we have there. As we go through the expenditures, there's percentages of our admin salaries, which would be myself and our assistant director and one of our rec supervisors, all the benefits that are with it. Um, utilities, uh, that, you know, rise and fall with what the rates are. Uh, they've been pretty steady over the last couple of years. Um, maintenance and repair this year's been, without the, we've had some, uh, known issues, so we did replace a one of our AC parts that was like twenty-five thousand dollars and some, um, known replacements, but this last one, like I said, is, is, was an unexpend- unexpected repair. Uh, it still is a very old building. It's got some awkward angles to it, and so it's not always the best, like, room formation. Um, but I think it will be a good discussion with this community and this board, hopefully, about the city campus and what the, you know, what the future would hold for it. Uh, budgetarily, I think that's, everything else is basically the same from the previous year's budget.
Jake, before you go too much further, I just want to jump into, to, uh, your opening comments and encourage the Alders. So, I spent, uh, today I spent four hours watching, um, the school board meeting
Mm-hmm.
from this week.
Yeah.
Um, the, most of which, uh, was around their facilities and potential of moving students and selling facilities and all of that, and certainly a big chunk of that um, last night, uh, if you didn't get a chance to watch the whole thing, um, was a great deal of positive support for our Parks and Recreation and what they do for our school district in terms of the after-school stuff. Um, and, uh, and as, it, it, it just, you know, and, and what was really great, I have to say in that four hours too, was there's, you know, there's a student on the school board, Elsa, who I think hands down was the most articulate school board member there, and that's not to say anybody else wasn't articulate, but she was amazing. And she, you know, jumped in at one point and was talking about Maywood and talking about the great program and, like you were talking about, the longevity of the people who have been through all of your programs. She ta- talked very eloquently, um, about the fact that it's not only the service that Parks and Rec provides to the kids, but also the number of students. As they get older, they get hired by Parks and Recreation, and, you know, got right down into and it's the best letting hill we have. Because she was making a case for Maywood staying, uh, Maywood, right? And how much she really, you know, how much we all should appreciate it, and she appreciated, and all the younger people doing it down. So, anyway, it was, it's, it was a great school board meeting, and it definitely is apropos to undoubtedly decision-making that this group is gonna have to make moving forward as well, so, uh, so I, I would encourage it. But I just wanted to say that, you know, um, totally unsolicited, uh, the, the, um, school board couldn't be more grateful, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on the community center budget?
Jake, I just have one. Again, it just keeps going back to the whole, um, to the salaries. So, on page one-twenty, I'm assuming that that's the salary for one person?
Uh, it's prorated. So, the community cen- so, we have seven different budgets, and the full-time staff are a percentage of each budget, so
Sure.
Um, but those, the percentage of those three are just myself and Missy and Jessica's salary.
Got it.
Most of the next four or five budgets, there's gonna be administration salaries, and then there's gonna be like full-time workers that directly relate to that program, so, you know, kind of.
Yeah.
Shouldn't see that.
Okay.
I think in most of the narratives, I have that actual percentage.
Yep, thank you.
One-twenty-four.
So, the recreation budget is the first one you'll see that has revenues that offset the expenditures, expenses, and the top line is the levy. Um, historically, as we've added programs and, um, ice rink and camp program, we just house them in the recreation budget. And so, this year, the mayor had asked us to have a more detailed, um, program of each of those individual programs, such as such large revenue generators. And we were happy to, um, to do that. We've been doing it internally, um, from revenue and expense. So, you'll see some dashed-out lines in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Those are just in their own standalone budget that you'll hear about shortly. And so, what that does is it changes the levy down, but don't worry, we add it in other places later. Um, and so, really what that does is has different program fees for anything that's not related to, um, the after-school or the summer camp program, uh, those would go in our general rec program fees, and so those are youth programs. With the addition of having Maywood, we have been put, um, putting more programs and classes at Maywood, which is great. So, tumbling, I mean, it's, if you haven't been there, I would love to, you know, give you a tour. It's a great facility. There's still, it's an art and craft room, and there's a tumbling room, and there's a tiled gymnasium, and so it does lean for the ability for us to offer more programs on nights and weekends at that facility. Uh, youth sports is our, our core sport programs that we offer. Um, you know, baseball, softball, play football, soccer, basketball. Um, and that's where that revenue comes from. Special events is in this, so the beer gardens, uh, Fall Festival, the Hu Hu Hustle, the Spooktacular. Um, all of those event revenues go into the operating budget. Um, and this year, we actually outperformed our, our budget goals with a very successful Fall Festival, which is good. Um, it does take a lot of effort and a heavy lift to put these on, but it's, uh, a lot of this is how we just engage with the community, so it's not just about the childcare program. It's that we have great beer gardens at Shaluter Beach, and it's a great time to come together as a community. We support other, uh, events that are happening in Minona. We don't have that necessarily tied into budget when we're talking about the amount of time that it takes to, um, evaluate applications for the other special events. Um, those are tied into general fund for some of the revenues, but generally, our time that we have um, to administer and to deal with the event organizers isn't really accounted for, but it is just kind of an extension of what we do, whether we're running the program or event or someone else's, and if it's in a city park, we're dealing with them, um, you know, directly. The credit card surcharge is a fee that we charge for using credit card. We have just switched processors, and so we've had a really challenging couple of years with our initial processor when we switched over software systems and excessive fees. And so, um, we try to recruit that with charging, like most businesses do, three and a half percent. Um, and that's where that revenue line item comes from. We were, we are cautiously optimistic that this switch over to a new processor will reduce the expenditure part of it.
It does seem, it only just seems a little high, but just remember, we're taking over a million dollars worth of revenues. So, it's gonna be higher number too, so.
Um, on the expense line, same thing with the administrative salaries. So, a lot of those are pulled out into the separate individual budgets, um, the part-time wages as well. The part-time wages that are included, the fifty-one thousand, that's for all of our, um, instructor and staff wages related to both youth and adult recreation. Rest of our benefits. The other expenditures are just tied into what the revenue is. So, youth sports, for example, if we would bring in ten thousand dollars more in revenue, we're probably gonna have some more expense. So, there's a, the direct kind of tie-in to the expenditures for some of these programs, which is based on numbers, jerseys, equipment, et cetera. Um, the one that we looked at here is the active network fee, so, uh, we should probably actually just change that. That was our original, original, original software system. That had a, that had a fee as well. Uh, but that fee covers the software system that we use. But that fee covers the software system that we use for registration, reservation, point of sale at the pool and at the rink. There's an annual fee and then there's also a percentage-based fee per transaction plus the credit card fees. So, there's a fair amount of fees to use a system that's pretty robust and has the ability for us to, to handle the fees that we do. The one that I'd like to just, a couple, both park field rental. Those are now in the general fund. And so, those expenses are tied to the revenue that we get. So, historically, we've been able to support field maintenance for the groups that use our facilities. So, that would include our tennis courts at Ahuska, our football field, the rental of the parking lot for the tree sale, Christmas tree sale. That's going to be coming up here the week of Thanksgiving. We've also started partnerships with fees for some of our youth sport organizations. So, this year specifically, One City Schools has been using some of our facilities for baseball, softball and flight football. And we're going to continue that partnership and, and see what that looks like long-term from both a use to support their students and also potential funding for improvements at some of our facilities. The other ones have been out because they're in individual budgets. Yeah, the same, the canoe kayak rental is in the general fund as well. That is a fairly popular program where we have different sites throughout the city where you can rent a space on a rack per season. And generally, most of those are filled. I think we have fifty-six spots at seven or eight different sites. And that revenue is in the general fund. And so, when we talk about like parks function and where the parks levy is, it kind of coincides with that revenue that used to be in the rec budget that offsets some of those expenditures of the general fund. So, the parks levy will be a larger increase, but we also have some of the revenue that's offsetting that in the general fund.
Yeah.
So, where did the canoe and kayak rental go to?
What's that?
Where did it go to?
It's going to be on page, the both of them. Page sixteen.
Sixteen?
Charges for, sixteen.
Oh.
Charges for service in the general fund.
So, it's no longer part of the rec budget?
No, it's matched up with the park one. Park one is in the general fund.
So, there was a period of time when we weren't handling day-to-day park maintenance-related expense. And so, when we were taking like shelter rentals, there used to be an administrative fee that was in the rec budget. And then when we got into the canoe kayak rental, we just kind of threw it in the rec budget, even though the expenditures are more park-related. And the parks budget is in the general fund. It doesn't have the ability, according to our finance director, to have the revenues attached directly to it like a rec budget and community center and pool.
Can't have a separate fund for special revenue because there's not special revenue for park fund, other than this. It's a whole requirement for a special revenue fund.
So, we have a bigger list in the public charges for service, which park shelter rentals have always been in that line item. Now, we just add end boat launch fee collections as well. And so, we just added a few more line items that used to be in the rec budget.
As a basic zero effect on each one, because basically revenue and expense when you're basically the same numbers from where I shoot. It's the same.
But if he had expenses for canoe racks, they would be out of the rec budget?
No. Comes out of the rec.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, look.
So, I have a question, Jake, as it relates to, I know you were talking about the rental of our spots for canoes and kayaks that we operate. But we also this season started contract.
Yes.
At Schluter, private vendor for renting boats. I'm just curious if that, if that was successful or how it went?
It's our second season.
Okay.
I haven't got the report back from year two.
Okay.
I'm not convinced that it's super popular. I also think this was a really bad boating and paddling season.
Yeah.
The wind and like, I know I didn't give out much on our boat.
Yeah.
And so, and maybe the spot is maybe, I don't know, Schluter is like starting and ending. If you're going north and coming back is okay. So, we're going to evaluate that. I mean, it's a minimal, you know, it's a small spot at Schluter, which they have. And so, there's really no cost to the city to have them there.
Right, yeah.
I'd like to see it be more utilized. But again, I don't want to have anything to stack it up to, other than what they did in year one.
Yeah.
And they may not want to come back either. So, I've, I've not had those conversations yet.
Questions for Jake on this one? Who do you want to go next?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
One-twenty-eight.
One-twenty-eight.
After-school program. So, this is one of our largest revenue generators that we have between the two programs. It's market-based. We are well over a hundred kids in the program. This also covers what we probably alluded to with the school district board meeting last night is the fact that we offer a 4K wrap program. And so, that, we have two full-time staff that are associated with that. And that's where the equity part, so in Cottage Grove, the school district runs 4K at one of their schools because they have the space. In Manona, at Winnequa, we do not have any space for that type of program. And they were more than happy to have, you know, us be able to run that program. So, we have some kiddos that come into Maywood at seven-thirty in the morning, get bussed over to Winnequa for their afternoon 4K, which is around eleven, eleven-thirty, and then come back at, you know, into school time until five, five-thirty PM. So, those are long days for some of those kids, but it's a really valuable service. And it's like a one-year like gap of like, it's really difficult. Like 4K is not full day. And so, it's half day or not even a half day. And so, to find care. And what we're finding, I think, with the program itself is we're creating these opportunities for these kids to get to know each other earlier and earlier. And then that bond, you know, travels from school time to the after-school program. And it has grown pretty big, pretty fast with the, you know, addition of Maywood. And there's always, you know, challenges that go with that. But overall, it's one of the more, one of the biggest, I think, transformational things that we've done as a department is to be able to put this program on and pull it off to be one of the people that it takes. So, the program is self-sustaining. It does cover all the expenditures that it has. And so, we have fees that are non-refundable registration fees. So, your spot is held and, you know, we used to have issues with like
Waiting lists.
Fifty waiting list and if you drop, you know, some people have already found other programs. We still have that though, is to kind of like hold your spot. You know, we're close to one-fifteen, I think. I think the school can handle up to two-hundred. But that would be, from a staffing perspective, might be incredibly challenging to find the amount of staff to do it. This is a good 4K group coming in, a larger group in Manona. So, we're still seeing, they have five sections, I think, of 4K this year. Four, it's going to be a bigger group. And so, I always, I don't joke, I say it actually seriously. Like, we need eighty babies a year coming into Manona or eighty kids coming into the school system in their 4K to kind of create this nice four section of, of kids. And that also supports our programs as well. So, we love seeing the strollers around town. And so, the after-school, after, after-school program fees, you look, we're at almost half a million dollars. And so, that is market rate. We, we compete with YMCA and MSCR to a certain extent on where those fees should be. The YMCA still has a program at Winnequa that's available for, for people. And there's still families that choose that option. And they also have low-income availability. So, we do not have the mechanism right now to offer scholarships or have a, a system set up for that. So, we do turn those people to the Y because they do have that there. Because at least since we've started, the direction has always been to cover the expenditures for this program. And so, that's where those, those program fees and that's for a monthly fee. There is a, an increase for next year for the program fee. That still keeps us in line or less than the non-member fee at the Y. And so, that's what we kind of look at. And so, YMCA has like a three-tiered like fee schedule. And so, they're really pushing their memberships first. And so, they have one fee if you're a member, another fee if you have a limited membership, and then a third fee if you're a non-member. And so, we just have res, non-res fees. And then the 4K wrap program you see is a hundred-nine thousand projected for next year. So, that is a pretty significant increase in revenue for the program based on the kids. It's also very challenging. For the four-year-olds, it's a whole different animal when it comes to, you know, it's not just for two hours after-school. We've got some kids for a good chunk of the day and there's rest time. And, you know, there's, it's four. It's a great year. And, but the kids are, are really enjoying the facility and the program instructors that we have are, are doing a great job incorporating nature-based education and really having that site next to the park, so close to the school is what makes it such an enviable program to have. No school days. So, we are incorporating, right now, we charge separate for the no-school days. In the 4K program this year, we wrap that in to the fees. And so, next year, we're wrapping the no-school fund days for our registrants and the fee. So, there's an increased fee, but you're also getting the no-school fund days, which there was one on Monday. Sometimes they pop up in the school calendars. Also done, right? The Friday Mondays, they dreaded Friday Mondays where we get a Friday long weekend. And so, those days are available for our participants. That's the revenue. The expenditure, same thing. You'll see this track, admin salaries. And that includes, is the percentage of what we have. Admin salaries are Missy, myself and Jessica's part of the program. And then our full-time salaries, the next line item, is all of our full-time staff that's allocated to the after-school. So, between after-school and summer camp, we have different percentages for those staff that are primarily focused on that program. And then the wages for the part-time after-school is the next line item down. In this budget, you'll see overtime because we do have, some of our full-time employees are hourly employees. They're not salary employees. And they have this transition effect where some, there is, we're using it because it's just the way it goes with either kids staying late or part-time staff not showing up on time when they're supposed to leave. And so, we account for that. Instead of comp time, we give them some of the options because comp time can be great, but it also just means that that's less, you know, less availability that they're there and we're paying, you know, a typical employee typical benefits. The lease, so the Maywood lease, it's five thousand a year, five thousand a month. And then there's an escalator of three percent a year, I believe, for 2026. So, that's nine months of the Maywood lease. And that gets paid quarterly over to the school district. We do the snow removal of the parking lots, the mowing of the grounds and the trimming, tree work. And they provide janitorial services inside the building and take care of all the utilities for the building. They also, Maywood also is home to the MG Future Program. So, there's a school district program in the building that's with our program as well. And so, there is some collaboration between those two programs during the daytime. But there is school district staff at that building during the school year. Transitional education program for nineteen to twenty-one-year-olds. There's probably five to seven students at once. So, it's not a lot, but they do have a presence there. The rest of this operating budget is program-related for supplies, professional development. So, we do train all of our staff CPR, first aid certified. We do promote to our full-time staff, continue with professional development. That includes conferences, memberships into after-school associations, continued professional development. So, we have some of our credit card fees listed here, prorated for what we expect for 2026. And then equipment maintenance and repairs. So, we try to continue this budget similar to what we have in other budgets of where we're spending our money for the program. Questions?
Five thousand a month isn't very much considering you don't have to pay utilities.
It was a pretty, I think it was a good deal that we negotiated on behalf of the city. And also, I think they accounted for the fact that there was a heavy weight on the offering of a 4K wrap program. And so, that, I think, kind of balances it out. And we're really pretty good at mowing and snow removal. And they're really good at like janitorial in buildings. And so, I think that part of it, it took some of the weight off of their plate from that perspective. But yeah, it's a good deal. I mean, I think it's, my goal is that we're partners with the school district. And we continue to have a, you know, an overall good working partnership, including, you know, we host baseball at Ahuska, freshman and JV. We host tennis, boys and girls, and there's no fees, you know, that are thrown, charged to the school district. And we use their facilities for our programs at Winnequa and Nichols, and there's no fees that way. So, from a working standpoint, on our end, it's always been good. You know, and we worked through the issues that we have and we continue to do so. So, and I think for this program to continue to be successful, like, I don't want to over-charge or charge so much for the program for our residents because it, it's expensive. I mean, I have a child in the program and it's not cheap. But, you know, we also want to make sure that we're paying our staff appropriately, including our part-time staff. And so, it's a good job for students. And we have to, you know, two to six, it's like a two to six PM job. So, we're kind of constantly actively recruiting people that are college students or different, different age adults, employees, because we do need them. And then our high school staff generally can't get there till four. And so, the, our high school and our younger age students are much more engaged in the summer camp program when it's an all-day versus the after-school. So, it's, it's the balance. And I, and I guess I would not, you know, it's a very good job market still for some of those people that are looking at that. And it's kind of challenging, you know, you gotta like kids. And you gotta find transportation to get here and stay here till the, the end of the program.
They're putting, just as a follow-up, they're putting more, they're paying more in utilities and in maintenance than we pay in rent. So, you know, we definitely have a sweet deal.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to say that one of the favorite things to see during the day is if you have not been down here, while one of the classes is walking. It just, it is, the activity level that comes with that is really great. They're really, I mean, you see, it's, I mean, God bless seeing us, you know, Mark and I walking around trying to, not exactly exciting, but you see a group of, you know, a dozen kids with a couple of student leaders walking around. They've got their matching T-shirts on. It is, it's really a great activity level for this, this whole civic campus area with everything. It's just, it's a nice community. It's just a nice community asset that I think is, yeah, certainly from a financial standpoint, but even just from a social standpoint, is really a great program to have.
And Jake, I know you have a lot of books, but I'm thinking, you know, as long as you're traping people back and forth between Maywood and Winnequa, maybe they should swing into the library and check out books. Just saying.
We have, but sometimes we might just be a little too loud. The libraries, like, I have, I've offered, you know, the library director to check out lots of books in my name. He would go through and numbers and he always politely declines. I would touch just on that, on that though. We, we have had a good partnership with the library, including scoops and stores. And so, we've had storytime down at Grand Crossing and at the rink. We've had a teen event that we've done some collaborative stuff with the library at GCP. So, really looking at how we can engage with the library as much as we can.
Yeah.
Got some questions. Yeah, this is, it's a jewel in the crown, right? This program spectacular. I just wrote down a couple of questions as I was listening to you, Jake, and I wonder if you could just repeat, just in case I misunderstood. Can you repeat again, how do kids get over to Maywood? Did you say there's a little bus that?
We walk.
Okay.
So, 4Ks are bussed. The 4K Um, the 4K kiddos are bussed and that's
From?
From Winnequa.
Oh.
Yeah, not from their homes, but if they're at Winnequa in the morning, they get bussed.
Across the parking lot.
They get bussed over, yeah.
Okay, okay.
K through four, uh, is a walking school bus. And so we, and you know, that, we basically have all the kids meet in the back of the school because there's so many of them. And it's a little bit of a process, right? Like, we have to like make sure we take the kids, all the kids that are there and sometimes parents, myself included, don't always notify the after-school staff when their kid's sick or leaving early for a doctor appointment. We're so-and-so and we're on the radios and we're communicating with school district personnel. So, um, it gets better as it gets colder actually because it's like, let's move, you know, like and get out and, and, and so getting that fresh air is also like a little nice to have. They're not just like bussed over because they're pretty, you know, rambunctious at the end of the school day and so getting some walking and fresh air is good.
Is the, the reason the 4K kids ride a bus, it's just something with state statute, they're not allowed to walk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and they do, the, the, the district does that to other daycare providers as well.
Okay.
They, they bust to the other daycare providers.
So the district is paying for the bus?
Correct.
Huh, okay.
Um, this year.
Sure. My other questions were about the district too. Um, did you say that in Cottage Grove, there was an after-school program as well?
Um, there's a YMCA after-school program in Cottage Grove 4K5. There's a 4K wrap program in Cottage Grove that's run through the school district.
So the school district is running a 4K wrap?
Correct.
In Cottage Grove for Cottage Grove families, I'm guessing.
Correct.
City of Manona is running a 4K wrap.
For Manona residents.
For Manona residents.
Or kids that are at Winnequa. It's not all the 4K kids are Manona residents, some are open enrollment.
So it's not just, okay.
Yeah. And then the, the Cottage Grove School houses the YMCA after-school program and they have the same challenges that we did when we were at the community center. They have capacity issues, so there's generally a waitlist.
And I just, I'm just thinking about like, you know, that every year we, you know, we've got this pie chart about, you know, this is a school district expense versus a city expense. I'm imagining the school district program in Cottage Grove is bringing in enough revenue to cover that program. I just, I'm thinking like as a person who lives in Manona, am I paying for the City of Manona 4K program and the school district 4K program?
Well, our 4K program and after-school is, is, there's no tax levy associated with it.
Right.
It covers expenditures. I can't answer that about the Cottage Grove program.
Okay. And then, um, Jake, for the staffing, is there a cer-, there's a certain number of kid-to-adult ratio that you're required to keep?
Yeah, generally thirteen to one.
Thirteen kids to one adult.
So thirteen students to one staff. But I think 4K is like ten.
Right.
Or nine, it's, it's less for the 4Ks. Um, but yes, it's thirteen to one. And so most groups are, um, we have them by color and they're in room, like twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, depending on what they are. Yeah, and two, two staff with them.
Yeah.
And they all kind of, sometimes they're taking, like, we don't put all a hundred kids down in the park every time they're rotating or in the gym or in our rooms. They, they rotate through, but there's two, sometimes there's two groups.
Yeah.
You might see forty, forty, fifty kids at, at a time on one location.
That's all. I just, it's a fantastic program.
Summer camp?
Yep.
Speed it up.
You're good.
You're good? Okay.
Speed it up.
You want to speed it up?
This summer camp is, is very similar to our after-school program, um, and, you know, if you look at the revenue coming with it, it's pretty close actually. So it's a ten-week program, but it's forty hours a week, it's all-day, it's, um, seven-thirty to five-thirty is when we can do that. And, um, those revenues, uh, the swim lesson add-on, which is like super popular for parents like me that don't want to do night swim lessons and see your kid can go to camp and they can do swim lessons during the daytime and you get your nights back. So if you remember, our, our normal swim lesson program is like full Monday through Thursday, two weeks, uh, in a row and you've got to be there. I mean, it's repetition, repetition, repetition. Um, and that allows for kids, those kids especially that attend the state and other evening activities, our parents can have somewhat of a balance between work and kids' activities. Um, so that's the revenue. Uh, again, this year, we added, um, field trips to the program and so, you know, I advocated for that with our staff, knowing that it was going to be a little bit of a, of long days on a bus, but it also is super popular and as a parent, my kid can go to Noah's Ark and I don't have to, that's pretty sweet. And they come home super tired and they crash on the couch.
Absolutely.
And so that increased significantly the amount of kids, especially that were signing up for individual weeks, uh, versus the full ten weeks. So we were averaging a hundred and thirty to, I think the high was a hundred and fifty kids and keeping one week in. And so we offer that option. And so we're getting, you know, kids from other communities as well, like to sign up for these camps. And so we still have the, 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 the school calendar, so in this new district, we'd love to get kids out of school earlier. Uh, June eleventh, I think, or June twelfth, it's pretty late this year, which shrinks down that program because we do need some, we need a week. Our, our after-school and summer camp staff would love two weeks of training where we're not having kids in summer, but I said no way, gotta make the work with one week because that's just too much for parents to handle. But it is, um, it condenses everything when we're talking about our high, our high school staff, the training. So it's really popular, really well-attended. Um, we'll continue the same schedule that we have this year. Same thing, so admin salaries, percentage of, uh, three of our salaries, um, and the admin team and then full-time. So our full-time staff, you know, portion of their salaries and after-school portion of it's in summer camp based on the amount of time that is appropriated to it, the part-time wages, uh, it, it takes more people to run summer camp, but we have more availability, which is great, a lot more high school students. And we also have a counselor and training program. So we take fourteen-year-olds and fifteen-year-olds and we have them work within the program. Um, their, their wage, they do get paid, but they're really trained, we're training them, kind of take over those classes and programs. Again, you'll see the Maywood lease in there, so that's for, um, July, August, three months, I believe is what we have allocated for the summer camp program and then all the supplies that, um, make it work. So, you know, our, our field trips, transportation is expensive, um, but those are allocated out through the revenues. One of the things we do have in there is some grounds maintenance and so we, we do have allocated funding in both wages to kind of take care of the property, both at Maywood School and the park. So when you think about a hundred and fifty kids, that's a lot of foot traffic in, in the park and we also do, um, some gardening activities with the, with the kids. And so this year, you know, we're looking at, can we start to plant some in the park anyway, um, some orchard trees that as we, you know, we did, our 4K kiddos did like a vegetable garden and, you know, the kids in summer started it, or last spring, summer, and then, you know, got to reap some of the harvesting here in the fall, in the summer. It was great. We want to continue to do things like that with this program.
I have a question about the field trips.
Yeah.
So, um, and I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm insurance-wise, because, you know, it's one thing if you're playing around with kiddos on our property or on, and I know there's waivers and all that kind of stuff, but, um, honestly, from my point of view, it just seems like taking groups of kids to somebody else's property, whether it's, you know, Noah's Ark or whatever it is, um, for day, you know, uh, or multiple days over, over summer camp, it, I don't know, it just seems like it would take on a different level of responsibility, is that not? Do you have, do you have additional?
The staffing responsibility, yes. And so we also certify a portion of our staff in like lifeguards and so that they can be in, if it's a water-based activity, they're in the water. So with the kids, as far as liability from insurance, like we're self-insured up to our, our retainer and then anything beyond that is covered. I mean, everything that we do when we're working with kids and dealing with kids for programs has an element of risk or, um, but, you know, all the, all the group, places that we go have group like forms and waivers that we have to sign off on for the kids. They have their own waivers. So basically if an incident does happen, you know, from a insurance, we're, we're going to be on the hook along with the place that we go and
Right.
Bussing and all of that. But, um, I don't think it changes like our local, um, city insurance or
They're aware of that. They have a good chance.
Mark, I, Mark, I have a boring question, but
Yeah.
I'm seeing all of these different, um, credit card surcharges and then credit card fees, but then broken up in these each groups, they don't equal out at all? You know, so for example, in the summer camp, we're, we have an expenditure of ten thousand, but then a surcharge of only two thousand. But then in other categories, so for example, after-school program, the surcharge is zero in an expenditure of a thousand.
Yeah, they're a little different from each different program. Like the summer camp and after-school, mostly are paid by AC ages and not receiving, so there's no surcharges on those.
Then why would we be?
The big ones where it's covered in is Grand Crossing and the Rink.
But like for summer camp, we're seeing a ten thousand dollar expenditure. Like I, I get it at the end of the day, these will probably balance out the two, but I don't know if this is just a factor of the first year being split out?
I think it's more of that, I think we'll adjust and, you know, eventually.
Okay.
And I think the surcharges don't cover all the fees.
They don't. That's part of it, yeah. They're not a hundred percent.
You can't legally charge like more than three and a half percent of the, the fee, the credit card fees, but then that percentage fees with all the credit card processing fees is more than three and a half percent. And so you can't recoup all of that. And it also includes prorated of what the, the, the software system costs per year to operate and you try to percentage that based on the amount of effort that we get.
I do think it's going to be a test year for the, for this breakout, so people have a better plan.
Yeah, okay.
So, so it is, it's simply just more in the right, I think it's going to be in the end of the wash.
And, and maybe there's a reason to break this up, but it almost seems like it would be easier for all credit card fees, surcharges and expenditures just to be all captured in one spot? Because I don't think you're ever going to be able to break it out.
Yeah, we're hoping with the new, the work of the new provider, they have to go kind of like that somewhere.
Okay. Okay, alright. I'm good.
Good?
Yep.
You're good, summer camp, good? Any questions? Okay. Uh, that takes us to Grand Crossing, yes?
Grand Crossing.
For the pool.
If you ask me what I'm most proud of in my term, it's this park and what we did to be able to provide, um, a very unique regional destination to Manona. And there's been several communities and rinks that have followed past us. We're the second public outdoor refrigerated ice rink in the state. It was a leap of faith by those of you on the board at the time and we secured naming rights for the facility, um, Manona Bank, which then changed to Lake Ridge Bank. So it's a little bit of a mouthful, Lake Ridge Bank River Rink powered by Manona Parks and Rec. Um, opening date next Saturday, the twenty-second, with light the ice on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. Hope you got my calendar invite, you're all invited, I hope you can see the magic. Uh, today was a long day of lights, uh, testing our system, filling the tubes. We will be, um, making ice probably Sunday nights and Saturday, Friday, Saturday or the sixties for temps, so we'd like it a little bit lower. Next week looks great and it'll be a sprint to kind of get ready for opening date. Um, the revenue associated with this, we wanted to break it out between, uh, winter and the skate season and kind of the off-season and, and summer, spring at the concession stand, which we call Below Deck. And so you'll see the revenue line items for admission. Um, and that, I would just say that the property taxes with the levy is like, if you look at where the administrative salaries are, we didn't account for all of those previously or when it was all in the rec budget, it came out in the wash. And so we wanted to make sure we allocate the time that both Jessica and Missy spend, um, running this facility, uh, into this budget. Um, but the ice skating portion of, of Grand Crossing, uh, covers all of its, uh, direct expenditures, um, and we still have some work to do on the summer programming and revenue that we bring in. Um, it is very popular, I can't believe we're in year seven
Yeah.
Already, which is insane. Uh, we've gotten pretty good at promoting and putting on events and getting different user groups in, recruiting different organizations to come at different times. Um, and so how this budget's broken out is I wanted to make sure that you could see monetarily where the money's coming at different times of the year. So we have skate lessons, uh, season passes, private rentals, um, admissions are, are still our most popular part of this is general admission. And, um, that is ninety-five percent people will rent skates too. So these are like date skaters as I like the call or like it, they're trying it for the first time. Um, we do partner with schools and so we have school group rates and we have, uh, students from Deerfield, um, outside of Dane County coming in. Uh, we're still trying to figure out a way with our own programs and transportation to get them down to the rink. Uh, one of the partnerships we talked about with One City School certainly is, is to bring some of their FIAE classes over, uh, for this year. MG twenty-one uses it quite a bit for FIAE in the wintertime. Um, and so this is a, uh, you know, more effort than maybe what I originally anticipated going in and because it's NPR, we go kind of over the top of, you know, the decorations and the lighting and the different events that we have versus maybe some of the other, um, you know, rinks that you see around the area. But we get like a lot of, uh, um, there's a lot of places around the country that we follow and see what they're doing, including, you know, New York City and we try to, you know, emulate that to get the experience, uh, to be a special, neat experience, um, right here in Manona. The other thing we have is the, the other revenue lining, summer concessions, and that is basically Memorial Day, Labor Day. And so, uh, we need to figure out a, a more, um, active events at that facility, which would generate concession sales. Because even though it's five dollars for a scoop of ice cream, that's a lot of scoops of ice cream in a night, you know, to, to try to continue to cover the cost of having employees there and utilities. So one of the things like I, like talk about is like, so the chiller that we have that MG and E supplies, the three-phase electrical, they will take the highest date of what we use for electricity and that sets your baseline of your monthly fee. So like I pay three hundred fifty, we pay three hundred fifty dollars a month just to have a meter in for that specific chiller, even though it's sitting empty and idle for, you know, ten months out of the year. So those expenditures are increased there. So they put the service in for free and they say, okay, well, this, whatever your max consumption of power is, is where your baseline meter fee is. And so we kind of learned that after year one and two and said, huh, okay, well, that's the cost of doing business, I guess, of, of having it there. And so those are expenditures that you'll see down in the expense line item. So, um, wages, part-time, that includes both, uh, winter and summer wages. Benefits, as you typically have, professional development and again, for this is training. Um, as you see, twenty thousand dollars for gas from electric utilities and some of that is the entire, um, Below Deck concession stand, that's included in that. And then half of like the park lighting, like we, we chop out some of the, uh, electrical expenditures that we have for the park because it includes this chiller and, and so part of that goes into the park's budget and then some of it goes into the Grand Crossing budget. Um, equipment, maintenance and repairs is a pretty big line item on this budget, just having a lot of things in the park, especially electrical and the Below Deck continues need to be maintained. Um, and then the credit card fees, as Mark was saying, I think it's just like pretty much like ninety percent of our sales are with credit card at, at GCP. And there's a lot of places that are going just cashless completely and, you know, of places that are going just cashless completely. And, you know, we might maybe going the other way at times, but it's, there's security challenges, especially being at that site and having, um, people working till nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, um, in both the summer and, and the winter. So, um, I think one of the big feathers in our cap, and I think we should all be pretty proud that we have that here.
How is the rink holding up?
Pretty good. Um, we've got some repairs that we have to make on the boards itself, the rollout tubing, like the, I can bore you with the process, but there's a lot of like stuff that we have to do to make sure it's ready to go. And there's like little holes that we do some repair, but our two, uh, full-time staff Dan and Emily are awesome at the rink, and they've got it down. Um, and it, you know, does pretty good. I think our Zamboni, our ice respirer, uh, isn't, I wouldn't have chosen it if I knew what we had to deal with, with this particular one. Um, that's my fifteen minutes. That's in fifteen all the wood. I know we started early. But overall, it's pretty good. So we have fifteen-year naming rights with Lake Ridge Bank Group Rink, and, you know, I think we're, we're not close enough to start to talk about re-upping or what that, you know, future would look like for the rink. Um, but again, it's one of those, especially when we talk about recruiting for staff, this is a really key part that I didn't really touch on earlier, is that I can offer students like year-round employment, basically. We can have you work in the summer camp and then come and work at after-school or our special events, and then come work at the rink in the wintertime. And so we start to like recruit and pull from some of these kids, especially the ones that are really good. It's like we want them continuously, and then we give them more responsibility. Well now you can, you know, you're lead at this position, or you can start to come up with. Um, and you see some of these students blossom and like develop and, and gain confidence through that. And this is, it's, it's another business. So we run in multiple businesses, you know, through municipal lens. Um, and, and really Jessica Walsh and Missy Miller are just amazing at like facilitating the staff and the scheduling and the events that we have here.
Are you sure it's, I know they, I saw them advertising, you guys are open Saturday.
We were supposed to open Saturday, but the weather, the weather had other thoughts.
Exactly. I haven't seen that advertisement.
I know. Um, so one of our partnerships with Discover Minona, I'm gonna just touch on that. If you saw, we were, um, we get ads as part of that, some advertising. So we're on Fox forty-seven pregame before the Packer game, um, which is pretty cool. Um, well, I'm hoping this year, I've asked nicely, is that we be featured in the Lake Ridge Bank calendar that goes out? Like, I said, what do I have to do to get December
Yeah.
with the rink? And so for twenty twenty-seven, come heck or high water, we're gonna see Lake Ridge Bank on that, uh, calendar that we have. Um, and so that's part of it, is we have to do promotions and marketing and, you know, advertising and working with that. So some of these events would be, um, featured on, you know, the billboard.
And that advertisement was probably the highlight of that Packer game.
Yes. Any other questions on Grand Crossing?
Okay. I was just gonna ask about hotel, hotel tax money. Do you use that sometimes for promotion on the rink?
Not necessarily. It's generally pushed to Discover Minona and Mezba, and then they get a buy for all of the events. And so they kind of negotiate with the different, uh, advertisers and then help support the different events that are happening in Minona and be able to use some of that money. So indirectly, yes. Uh, not directly, though. So we're not applying, uh, at least the last two years through Minona Parks and Rec for tourism funding.
Okay.
So I have a hot tip for you from the school district. Somebody, uh, which I'll remain nameless, uh, was asked for consideration of specific hours at the rink that are just, um, pucks and sticks.
We have had that request. Um, it's tough doing pucks and sticks. It's, uh, it is, it's, it's, it's much like the pool when we're kind of delegated the time of when people are wanting and, you know, frustrated with the hours of operation and balancing learned to skate programs are much more of a focus, I think. Um, we've, we've tried it at different times with just like the tennis balls and, and, and hockey sticks. Uh, hockey's really tough on the rink versus like just general skating, because they're like hard stops and really cutting deep into the ice. So the, the style of like how they play hockey versus like regulation, just kind of skating around and can be a little more challenging than just maintaining the ice.
Okay. Just thought I'd let you know in case you
We're all just take that into consideration. I, I do think there, I know there's like a learned, there's like an intro to hockey for parents that we have this year, where it's like, you have a parent that's new to hockey, or have an instructor that's gonna teach you everything about what to be a hockey parent, right? All the homeless.
Yeah. Should be exciting.
Yeah.
Are you teaching?
No, but we could teach them how to yell.
Cosigna.
You could do a curling, introduction to curling.
So stay tuned, curling. There'll be announcement soon.
Yeah, good.
Think end of January, start of the Winter Olympics. Pool, 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 and parks. Sorry, guys. Alright. Everyone's favorite thing that we have in Minona, right, is the outdoor swimming pool. Um, the pool was built nineteen ninety-three. Do you remember what you were doing in nineteen ninety-three? I was a freshman in high school.
A freshman in college.
And we have maintained it pretty darn good from a mechanical operation. And the community has always supported this pool. Uh, high levels of attendance, high levels of participation, home to a very wonderfully functioning, um, Minona Swim and Dive program. Uh, our Aqua Zumba is like stuff that legends are made of, the number of people that come to that program. Um, a lot of our competitors or other community outdoor pools with much larger population centers don't do as much revenue as we do. Um, but in saying that and bringing in the amount of revenue that we have projected for passes and admissions and selling concessions, we're still subsidizing this pool, uh, by a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. So that is a levy that all of us are paying for, because it costs a lot to maintain this pool. Um, the, the biggest challenge that we have, that we, that we're addressing this year with increased fees for daily admissions are going up, um, I would say significantly. We talked about our initial proposal, and we backed that off. Uh, but we really want our residents to buy a season pass. So there's much value in a way better price per entrance by purchasing a season pass, which we've left, we've actually decreased for like a family season pass this year from Minona. Everything else is a slight increase. But the daily admission, especially for non-residents, has gone up quite a bit because our lifeguard first-year wages got significantly lower than our competitors, including, and those would be Goodman, Middleton, Sun Prairie. And so we're also kind of fighting our own staff. Like, our after-school, if you work in summer camp, you're making seventeen bucks an hour. If you were working as a first-year lifeguard, it was twelve fifty. And so, and you have to get certified, which we will pay for and we will train. Um, and your hours may not be as, like, at the pool, your hours can be like flexible. Like, if it rains, you don't work, you know, like, and we're closed for the day, you don't get to work. So we have brought those wages up to be competitive, because our Missy, who runs the pool, is nervous about not having enough staff to be able to stay open. And, and the last couple of weeks of the summer are always really challenging because of, uh, college students going back to school, high school students have extra, their extracurriculars. And we want to stay open as, as long as we can. And so one of the things that we have dipped our toes in the water, so to speak, is non-traditional staff, so adult staff. And, um, whether or not we can continue to recruit for more specific roles that, you know, like, they don't have to work nights and weekends, but I mean, they, they, the early morning swim, swim team's there because, you know, kids want to sleep in. But it is addressed in this year's budget to increase those wages. So you'll see that's a fairly significant increase in the expenditures. Um, but we did keep within a three percent levy increase on the pool budget itself, based on the projections that we're looking at for revenue. Um, I think there'll be some, you know, especially non-residents, like frustrated with the fee, but I also am like a hundred percent in supporting having our staff be, uh, paid what this area pools are making and the fact that this is already a resident, a city of Minona resident subsidized facility. And so we've all been to the pool or seen the pool and it's been really, really busy on those really hot days. There's a lot of non-residents that come and visit the pool. And so sometimes to the point of like, eh, it's really crowded, we don't wanna be here today. Um, but it is a very, um, great amenity to have in the community, but we need to try to recover as much, you know, revenue as possible. Um, the rest of the expenditures, outside of the wages for part-time, stay relatively, um, flat. We saw some, a little bit of decrease in the health insurance line item just from, um, what we had budgeted originally to what we have for staff for next year. Um, everything else roughly stays the same. We did, the, the chemical cost, um, is down a little bit. We're going on, back on a, a, a water management contract, which locks us in for a specific rate for chlorine, although those, that market's been kind of fluctuating, uh, over the years. Um, and for the most part, our equipment holds up, but, you know, the bathrooms, we've, we've been replacing through capital, um, and operating fixtures in the locker rooms and, um, but it's, it's still an aging system and, and we do our best. But, um, we'll be open, you know, the first weekend in June through the last Sunday in August.
One quick thing. These two oh four, I was, this is senior set. It was a set before I was here. I called my, I was seeing the funds. So they don't, they don't have a fund balance. You know, whatever, if it's a gain or a loss at the end of the year, goes back to the general fund. So, yeah, just the way it's been set up is, I don't know, all the world has set it up, that's the way it's been something. So there's, there's zero fund downs for it.
Any questions about the pool?
Are you suggesting that could change?
I mean, it's just the way it's set up. I mean, if that's some hole we have to look into.
There are some communities that are going to fund balance for recreation revenue. So they pull out admin salaries and basically whatever your budget is above and beyond that, if you bring in exit revenue, it goes into a fund balance. And then that can be used for future capital projects or cover years that are short type of deal. Um, but in our, our case, it won't work because of the levy, you know, the, the levy that we need for some of these other programs. So we'd have to pull out like my salary, you know, it's, it would have to be a discussion right now. It would be not, never, it won't be levy, levy due troll.
Yeah.
It would be an increase in the levy temporarily to support, you know, long-term the, the services that we offer. We do, okay.
We have other dividends.
For another day.
We'll come to a consensus at some time, where you can hear us argue sometime, too. It's quite entertaining at times.
Any other questions about the pool? No? Okay.
Parks?
That means students.
Actually, Jake, I'm sorry to
Any questions on Parks budget?
Jake, Jake, I'm sorry. Could you again explain, back to the swimming pool, a really quick question. Could you again explain the line at the top under revenue about daily admissions and why the difference between the hundred and fifty thousand committee budget and the hundred and thirty-five mayor's budget?
Yeah, so originally, we were going to be charging more in daily admissions
So you're just
based on the fee.
Okay.
And after discussion with the mayor, and I kind of had the same concerns about the jump from what it was to what we were proposing initially with the revenue.
Yeah.
And so we went to a scaled back version, which is still, you know, it's not gonna be not expensive, you know, like, but in comparison to what other recreational activities are, it's in line with that. So that's where that difference is. So we scaled back the fee and the revenue, and then found some expenditure reductions as well.
So for, so Minona residents can get a break
Yes.
on their annual pass, is what I'm hearing?
Correct, yes. So it's still a bit, the, if you were looking at the number of visits you intend to cool, the season pass is your best option for
Fantastic.
Parks, last one. Um, so salaries for parks is a portion of myself, our two full-time people. Uh, one of our rec coordinator positions actually has fifteen percent or ten percent of their salary, because they work in the parks for four to five hours a day, spring through fall. So it is a, um, a little bit of an added benefit for us, because we, there's never a shortage of things that we need to do in the parks. And all, um, options are on the table of how we do it. So that's where those numbers come from. The part-time wages, you know, we've got a couple different options for next year. Um, but it just, it is costing more to maintain our parks and making more people to maintain on an annual basis. Um, the rest of the expenditures are in line with what we've had in previous budgets. Um, outside services is one. So one of the things that has been really helpful, I think, uh, with the referendum is on the non-personnel is in some of those contracted services. So like, for this year, we were able to, um, do some contracted service work at, at Grand Crossing. And we will continue to look at areas where we just don't have the staff at the right time. So when you think about like Lottis Boat Launch, looks really bad. The landscaping there needs a lot of help. And so that will go into contract service. We have a specialty line item for Woodland Park. So, uh, we're in the first year of a contract that, that took on the work of our super volunteer, John Traver, to be able to, we just had a prescribed burn last week and, uh, management plan activities. Um, we have a proposal that is budgetarily included for Operation Fresh Start, to be able to do some work in Minona. Uh, and this is a lot of vegetation management activities. Um, and we get really, really busy between April and May, and it's just like hard to keep up with everything that we need to keep up. So that's been really helpful, and it's year one this year, and we're gonna continue to make sure that we use that, um, money that's in there. The other thing is, there were some capital items that historically were, were out of capital that I'm operating. It's bike racks, benches, trash can replacements. Um, this year, we added another six recycled plastic, um, picnic tables in our system. And then we're able to redeck, um, and add more picnic tables. So like, we need more picnic tables at Winnequa for our special events. And so we, you know, build them in slow time or medium, um, time with the staff that we have. And so that has been really good, uh, for those outside, what would be considered outside services. We do have a lot of facilities in the park system itself, with the restroom facilities, shelters, et cetera. Um, and more vandalism over the last couple of years. And so, uh, those service calls related to vandalism continue to go up. Uh, we did just have, we're pretty close to being online for our security cameras at Ahuska Park, which is one of our frequent flyers for vandalism and graffiti. Um, that will help and assist our PD in, um, monitoring and, and live. Right now, we can get some of the, some of the things on camera that are happening there, but, um, it can be challenging from like all the things that we want to get done to make our parks usable for people and then for them to get damaged or vandalized and graffiti that we have to take care of. I think that's all I have to highlight on the parks. Uh, the one that we talked about is, um, the last one, and we put this in there, we talked with Mark left, but unemployment compensation. So I, we always talk about
It's getting these extra
the need for additional full-time staff in the parks maintenance. It's not, but I'm not, we will continue to do the best we can with the people we have. But what happens the last couple of years is when we hired non-traditional employees, that would be adults that are able to start April and work through November, um, we're getting unemployment claims for them. And so that happens a lot in landscaping businesses, uh, or seasonal employment happens with Madison Parks quite a bit. But it, last year was nine thousand dollars for two employees that were claiming unemployment. And we have to do it, like, we have to pay for it. And so that's kind of the cost of not And so that's kind of the cost of not having full-time staff than they're paying for, you know, you are paying more or potentially paying more for seasonal employees that are claiming unemployment and we were their last employer. So it is now in the budget as just a comparison and probably one of my future, you know, stump, one of my future pulpit requests when we talk about staffing, which I know the rest of our departments all have, you know, staffing challenges. So we can get by, but it's just, so it's all known, this is a cost to a business.
So I, I actually, I don't, I know we talked about this only met, but it still is a struggle for me because it seems to me if you advertise it as seasonal from this day to this day, that they shouldn't be able to collect unemployment.
Right.
I think it has to do with the number of, even if it's a short-term employment-
Right.
-it's, it depends on also, I think the hours they're putting in weekly. I'm sure there's a minimum number that if it goes past a certain number of weeks, Leah is very well versed on trying this.
Yeah. Yeah. We, I, I've also said the same thing. Are you sure that we have to legally do this because we get these?
I'm not suggesting anybody's doing it wrong except for the, perhaps the state because-
And this is if they left it.
Well, you're beating the punch on that one there. I think it is a situation where they, these individuals know, they know the rules and they take advantage of them as they have a right to do in this case. It's what it appears to be, so. But again, that's, while it's a creative effort to hire, hire and work with those folks who are, you know, different, different ages and more, but this is the downside of doing that is that there's, so occasionally this will become an issue.
So I, I have a pleasure, actually just yesterday, of spending a couple of hours at Operation Fresh Start with Cody and with Jody and everybody because I, my Jody at the chamber, Madison Chamber, and super operation, really inspiring. And they were also talking about doing burning and stuff and I know that we've made a commitment to Woodland and, but I can't remember.
Yeah.
Somebody, I ran into somebody who's a friend of Karen's who said they were going to do a fall burn.
Yes.
Obviously there wasn't a fall burn or not yet.
We did do it, yeah.
You did?
Yeah, so we have a contract with Quarkus-
Okay.
-to do management activities, including a burn, which was last Monday? What is today? Was it this Monday? It was either last Monday or this Monday.
She was going to call me so I can trip her.
Yeah, it was, it was a Monday because I got the message on a Sunday.
Okay.
And it's like late, super late notice. And then again, because we have great staff in the city, including our fire chief, I messaged him and said, what do you think? Can we do it? And he replied back right away, like, you know, yes, we're good to go. And so we were able to get in. And that's kind of the nature of what prescribed burn is, it's like temperature and weather and all that. And so ideally we do it in the spring, get better, I think overall better results, but we'll, we'll connect with them on what the, what the plan will look like for, for next season.
Where, where's the burn?
At Woodland Park.
Woodland?
Yeah.
I actually got a telephone call from a resident who was upset-
Yeah.
-because they had a breathing, like an asthma, an asthmatic, you know, person who was really struggling and they understood that it needed to happen. It was just like, well geez, if I had known, I would have made plans to do something different, leave town, you know?
Yeah. It, I think we're going to struggle with how we can properly notify-
Notify, right.
-if it is like, so that was, but we'll work on with our-
Yeah.
-vendors is like, how much notice can we give and then, you know-
It's weather dependent.
Ideally, we'll just have a listserv that those people can sign up for-
That's a great idea.
-and we can blast it out as soon as we-
That's a great idea.
...get notification so they're aware of it.
That's, that's sufficient.
Having participated in some, some of those burns, I've seen John Traver, you know, out there with the little thing to see what the humidity is and-
Right.
-I mean literally making a call-
It's impossible to know, right?
-right there, you know, with the wind and how humid it is in particular.
So the listserv is a great idea for that reason.
Yeah.
Mayor, I just had another question. Jake, could you repeat what you said before about outside services and could you just explain the jump in that line?
Sure. And so that outside service also includes our beach testing. So the water testing at both Frostwoods and Schluter. It includes historically, we've been able to support an MG School to Work program in that account. That has unfortunately due to our retirement, I think that program has ceased to, to happen. But let me just pull it up here because I think I have it, I think I have it in numbers.
Yeah, the, the jump between twenty twenty-
Mark's children.
Yeah. Yes.
And twen-, it's just, yeah.
Okay, so the other one was tree removals, contracted. Tree removals is in this account now, not in capital anymore.
Very good.
So tree removals, stump grinding. Maywood Park is got, so like what we're seeing around town is like a ton of invasives in our wooded and tree areas, including poke weeds. So if you see a big root that's purple flowering, it takes over, grapevine. And so this is, especially at Maywood Park, we've got a lot of stinging nettles and a lot of stuff that's like wants to hurt the kids.
Yeah.
And part of removing a bunch of trees in one area means a bunch of invasives grow up. And so we've got to get to a contracted management plan. The other one that we, that is one that I'm probably will bring a recommendation and not continue to participate in is this Dane County mosquito monitoring program. And so they dip certain areas for West Nile and we've got one really problem spot and it's the, the pond or the rain garden that's on the west side of the lagoon that was done by a volunteer group years ago. That's like a problem child. So it doesn't function as a rain garden because it collects water and doesn't rain and it has the most amount of like larvae for mosquitoes in it. The rest of our sites are fairly like fine the, the last couple of years. And so I also have challenges just with how Dane County Public Health likes to charge us for permits and then not give us the service. But this one, this one is one that we, I think if we maybe look at with Public Works because it's, it was a stormwater detention, it's like a mini stormwater detention basin that doesn't really work, that flows into the lagoon, that we can potentially fill that in and just have movable grass space-
Yeah.
-and probably get off of that. And then pest control is on there too. So mice abatement, so we do have mice issues at a lot of our facilities. And so we do have the, the mice traps there.
So am I hearing then that this figure for twenty twenty-six includes things that were not part of, let's say just two years earlier?
Correct.
We've gone from twenty-two thousand dollars to thirty thousand.
Correct.
So it's just new things have been added.
Correct.
Okay. And subtracted from other areas of the budget?
Right, yeah. Other questions?
I have a small question, I heard. We really talk about revenues now, boat launch revenue, which brings a general fund, just want to give you two seconds.
That is down?
No. Move the two to general fund because it's going to be lower.
From what?
Move it from, move the two to general fund from the trust account.
Oh, yeah. So revenues, but the expenditures for boat launch are in parks and that's generally time that we spend at our boat launches. The revenue is not catching up with what we thought and primarily our biggest launch is at Lattice and a season pass holder. So we've had some very spirited discussions with our colleagues at Dane County Parks and City of Madison about the boat, cooperative boat launch program because you can buy a pass and use thirteen different launches across the City of Madison, Manona and Dane County. However, that our one launch in Manona serves both Wabisa and Manona is a very popular launch, which is ninety-five percent filled daily in the boating season by people that have season passes, of which maybe ten percent are buying their pass from little old Manona. And so, and we have a couple of cooperative programs that I think it's, it's good, we're all like, you know, we've known each other for a fair amount of time, so we have the ability to talk like honestly about the program and the merits of cooperation and whether or not we need to do some standalone. And, and I'm not ready to say our boat launch program needs to be a standalone. Like if I were to do it based on money, I would say Manona's daily fee only. There's no season pass options. Every time you use a launch in Manona would be, you pay eight dollars. And that would bring in significant amount of revenue, more revenue, but would also be a public relations. There would be a lot of angry boaters about it because it's fifty dollars for a pass. So if you go six times, you're basically paying for the season pass and those fees for the boat launch program are generating, Dane County Parks takes the lead on setting the fees and then we just accept them into the City of Madison and City of Manona. And their parks commission has been less than willing to raise their fees. And there's some state statutes about what you can charge for boat launch. We could charge more for the annual pass, but the Dane County Parks chooses not to.
I know the Ace Hardware on Cottage Grove, you used to sell a lot because I remember when they left before they came back.
Right.
That they were one of your biggest purveyors. Did they do any, anything at all with boat launch stuff anymore?
No, because there's no fishing stuff.
There's no fishing?
Yeah.
I haven't been downstairs.
West Marine closed, so we said, you know, site at West Marine. And then like for them, it's hard because they, they don't want to deal with the tracking of money. And then if you pay with a credit card and you're discounting like transaction fees for us too, it's less. So it's, we haven't found the right partner yet for it and I don't know if we will, like quite honestly.
Thanks. That's all.
That's all.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Mark.
Your next year will go really quick.
He's still not watching.
Yes, we are on to revenues, which is page fifteen.
So just a quick little, quick, or handout of kind of the major changes. If you have any questions, let me know. Just about taxes, other property taxes, taxes from the water utility, ZAP utility, taxes from senior utilities. Your water utility is taxed though, it's been going down this year because it's based on depreciation number. Appreciation number is going down, so our tax bill's going down. We've been up around three hundred thousand with prior history. It's less than, been less than that, so kind of adjusting with the prior history's been, prior history, prior history. Government revenues, shared revenue, a number comes from the state. That's all expenditure restraint, they're not qualified in twenty-six or twenty-five for twenty-six. We made it for twenty-six for twenty-seven. Fire insurance, this is a number you get from the state. Jerry does reports on this. When he was here tomorrow, we can talk about that. I'm not sure exactly what he does to increase it, but if you look at two thousand twenty-two, we're at fifty-six thousand. We received eighty thousand this year. I put it as eighty thousand for two thousand twenty-six budget. So it's been going up, up ten, ten thousand per year. So I probably will jump again, but I have no, little estimate on it's going to jump. I just looked at that. Did decrease the public state aid for twenty-five down to fifteen. That's your grants were being given for Olivia High's speed grants. We're not doing as many right now and just in general grant numbers have been decreasing. The rep, the, it's not on the expenditure side, on the base side has decreased due to the overtime for this grant, so. So it's kind of a wash in the end. Transportation aid, that number comes from the state, it's a rolling year average and six-year rolling average transportation cost. License and vermin, little minor changes, but pretty much the same as last year. Fines and port charges and penalties, very bottom. A little, a little concerned about the court penalties. We are down this year and the year before. I think it might go up next year, especially with the new code enforcement officer because that's also where the code enforcement costs go. I'm just going to leave that there this year. I want to feel few, we'll kind of see what happens in twenty-six. Probably a little, a little low in the parking violations. I just saw a report today, we're getting closer to about fourteen thousand this, this through today. The number could probably be in the future, probably is going to increase, it's going to increase, but for now just increase to two thousand. Hope charges for service on page sixteen. So here's where kind of the major changes are. Kayak rental, we talked about Jake, park bill rental that Jake talked about and the boat launch collection money. We talked about, if you look back in the prior history, twenty-three, twenty-four, it was zero. So we have a separate fund by state statute. We have to separate boat launch money that comes in. It's really kind of a transfer back, but I'm sure it is revenue. Six, five years ago, six years ago, we did a, some boat launch capital projects and came up short. So we basically borrowed it from the general fund. So all the money in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, it'd be kept in that one special fund. Pay back the debt, that's we paid, we paid back the debt because they right on you had a negative fund down, so. That started, that's almost paid off, so now we can start using it again for the general Rents and leases, went up to ninety-one thousand on this lease revenues. That's the Adams contract. We still have to receive the money, but I think once, is it, what's the, do you know where it starts? I mean, I'm-
Depending on how fast they get approvals, I imagine no later than this spring. They're, they're, sites can prep, so, but they have to get final permit approval from DOT as well as final, you know, confirmation that they've met all our selling conditions.
So what I don't love some is the, that's all I have for the revenues. Any questions?
Any questions? None. Next one up is debt services, one sixty-six.
Yeah. Debt services, kind of like talked a lot about them. Debt service, give one fifty-six.
One sixty-six.
So if you kind of look at one sixty-six, as you can see the increase for the property tax from this year to last year. If you look at last year, we did use a transfer from the general fund, we did use fund downs. This year we are using fund downs from the debt service fund, nine hundred thousand. But if you kind of then look down at the principal and interest comparing two thousand twenty-five to twenty-six, it's actually a decrease of about roughly eighteen thousand. So we are kind of leveled off at the debt, or debt service as far as the principal interest. Since we did have that large decrease last year, we use the fund balance from, basically fund downs from the general fund and then fund downs from the actual debt service. So that's, so we decreased by nine hundred thousand this year. We basically are using a majority of the nine, uh, fund balance debt service. So the future years, that, then fund downs from the debt service, gradually go away. I don't know, maybe next year maybe the most, two hundred thousand. We had questions on the debt service?
Yeah, so-
Yeah, Doug.
So once we have paid down the, the fund balance of the, the debt service fund balance, then we'll, there'll be that hole, right?
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have to kind of that little bit, we could use fund balance from the general fund-
Right.
-to balance it down to the C O, same as last year. But we know that eventually it's going to have, it's going to go away.
Right.
So we kind of, you know, building a backup, smalling it.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, next up is TIPS, that's one sixty-nine.
Yeah, so TIPS, if you look, kind of actually look on page, before we start, look at page one eighty-three, wait, wait, one eighty-seven, describes each TIP, I think they all for doing this, describes each TIP- But we know that eventually it's going to have, it's going to go away.
Right.
So we kind of, you know, build in a backup, smalling it.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, next up is TIFs, that's 169.
Yeah, so TIFs, if you kind of actually look at page, before a second. Look at page 183, page, way 187. Describes each TIF, I think they all figured this. Describes each TIF, kind of gives a look and the name of it is. Camden Creation Date, Amendments, Last Year Expenditures, Closure Dates. Current fiscal conditions, projected fiscal conditions, major projects and so on. So if you kind of want to redo there, if you get a chance, it kind of describes all the TIFs and what's going on in those TIFs. So if you kind of go back to the, like the 169, kind of each TIF, number four. So majority of these projects are your TIFs now are basically just principal and interest, especially the old ones. So if you just look at kind of TIF four, you get your tax increment, personal property taxes and computing interest income. And then mostly expenditures, as you can see, is principal and interest. TIF four is Roman Drive, which can close in 2027. TIF five, which is Garden Circle, again, same situation, principal and interest. And for the same, basically, all of them have the same basic revenues, except for this one has a transfer from TIF. So TIF number six on the very next page donates to TIF number five. We show that TIF number six, which is the clinics, North Point. Very successful TIF was able to donate. As you look at page 171, you see the transfer to, to TIF on the expenditures. And that's can donate to TIF five. TIF seven, same thing. They're all the same pieces, 78. Principal interest is the main expenditures. TIF eight, same thing. TIF eight is a donor district to TIF nine. As you can see, the principal and interest and the amount we're donating to TIF nine. Page 174 is TIF nine, which is Riverfront, current in there. So they do have some salaries in there, principal and interest. So TIF 10, which is the Bloom, apparently, these are all going to change based on activities. Right now, there might be small activities. You never know what's going to happen during the year. So professional service on these. Part of that's going to be part of the Roman Drive corridor in St. Broadway. TIF 11, page 176. TIF 11 is Owen Road, Village Lanes. Same thing, TIF 12, Pirate Island, I believe, or River Place. And if you look at TIF 12 though, actually, I'll do that later. So all these, I don't have any questions on these. I mean, they're all the same thing, legal access, professional services. They don't have a principal interest, so we have a problem.
These are all the new districts that are just created this year.
One thing I wanted, if you want to go to page, if you go to page eight.
Page eight?
Yeah.
Well, Mark, I have a question about the TIFs, TIF rather. Can we actually on the sheet, can we have TIF district number 11 in a parentheses? Like whatever the.
Yeah.
I don't know about anybody else, but I know that we always end up having to refer back to 11. To keep the number and whatever the business was that relates to it. And if we could just have it here, it would be much easier.
No.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we have to do that too.
Just to know if there was a reason.
Usually have a number.
Yeah, page eight has that.
Yeah. Page eight, so this is, this is the TIF calculation form, how it all works. You get your tax levy, the first column, you get the districts and appropriation levy. That's everybody's tax levy and then they do a whole equalized formula. And they tell you how much you levy, you can levy for your TIF increment. So there's a, at the bottom part, equalized value per district. Equalized value is how much is, how much value has been generated since the base value. And then 2026 is your increment that you'll receive. As we talked about, Manona Drive, which is, could be, we talked about maybe closing in 2027. That's where I was getting that number, about a million dollars for Manona. Garden Circle, little, Garden Circle is a little different because that one had a, that section. It's kind of affordable housing, so the assessments aren't very high for that one. Because part of the MSP project is affordable housing. Clinics is doing extremely well. You see the increase from this year to last year for the clinics is because of the North Point project that was completed. Fairway Glen, Trace Town, currency. One thing I want to point out, River Place in Village Lanes, in Pirate Island, in one year. Has been existing, so we increased the values of those TIFs. So I know there was a question, kind of, I think maybe somebody asked me about this question. I don't know if we talked about it at the, during the capital projects. If you have enough money in these TIFs or basically some of these projects. As you can see, some of these TIFs do, you know, you can look at Village Lanes, River Place and Pirate Island. Just, just one year, we generated that. And that's probably can be consistent to even a larger project. Ones that would be the ones that are always going to be Nichols and Eastside Club are the ones I would probably say we get the lake scene, same with Soft Town. See what's going to happen with that, if there's a big project there. I know we have Topgolf area, the Soft Town. But otherwise, I think the other TIFs, the new TIFs are actually going to be good financial standing. I think eventually is one of the things we have to look at in the future. Five, six years from now is do we want to set these up as donor districts too? Or some other projects, so. Something to think about, it's too soon for that. Somewhere down the line, you know, Bloom too. I mean, we'll have a $26, $20 million project come in here fairly soon. And that's going to generate over $500,000 at least. That's all I have.
You have one question?
Yes.
Mark, you indicated that the current TIF nine is a recipient of funds from TIF eight?
Yeah.
Is that going to change at some point? Because you look at it and see it's like $68 million in increment value with a 1.3 million increment.
Yeah, I think like a couple of years probably. The hardest thing about, if you look at the two TIFs that we, that have the donor district, money come from TIF five, Garden Circle and the current, the reason why they have the donor district is because we bought the properties and we had to hold them for a while. So that built up a lot of capital. We had a buyer of interest, we had buyer of interest to make our interest payments. So they're in the TIF. So that, borrowing costs added up and so it's taken a little bit longer to pay that down.
Right.
So with this number, you have the 1.3 in LISA coming online here fairly soon. We could probably not use all that amount for trace stuff.
Right. And we had like a million dollars extra in, so removing the sewer line, right?
Yeah. There is a lot of stuff that's involved when you buy properties and, just because you have to sit for a long.
Right.
Buying them, it takes three years actually.
$10 million to the act like?
Yeah, right, forgot about that, yeah.
And what do we pay for the parking? Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions about the? Okay. Mark, once again, thank you. We'll see you tomorrow. That's the worst threat I can leave you with is we'll be back here tomorrow. Yeah, and.
You were on target, it's a joke.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got too many budgets now.
So without, I'll take up a motion to adjourn. So I'll move. Second?
Second.
All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned, thanks so much, everybody.